So where's, oh my gosh, that's really loud. Isn't that really loud?
Hello?
Hello? Hello? Where's the one for tonight?
It's just Public Works.
Oh, we didn't have something at our place?
Tonight, we are doing this, uh, this is Public Works and the second part of Park and Rec and Culture. On your, on your seat there tonight, you should have two things. One of them is the slides.
Okay.
The other is a single sheet of paper here that shows what page in the, in the master's book that these appear on.
Okay?
Okay? So with that, um, would you go ahead and get started? Our first presenter tonight is Ms. Jackie Cramzer, our new risk manager. If you want to come on up, Jackie.
Welcome.
Welcome. Okay, so, um, like Dean said, my name is Jackie Cramzer and I am the new risk manager for the town. Um, the position is new for 2018. Oh, sorry. Okay. Um, it's a brand-new position for 2018. It was part of Human Resources and with recommendations and data, um, it was decided to create a new position. Uh, it was moved to the Public Works facility out of Town Hall. And, um, however, I, the position is seen as working with all departments to help with internal safety manuals and policies, making sure every department is within compliance. Um, I'm also the liaison to SERSA, our insurance company for property and casualty liability and workers' compensation. So I oversee all of the claims management for all of those pieces as well. And, um, as well as staff training. SERSA has a online training site that has been marginally used. My hope is to have it be even more robust next year. Um, so two of the key initiatives I have for 2019, one of them is an overhaul of the safety manual. Um, I believe it was 2013 or 14, the last time it was redone. It's very antiquated and a lot of information can be revised and updated. And that, that project started this year, but it was put on hold with this new position in place. Um, the other thing I'm, I'm looking to, uh, to do is increase safety awareness to all employees, to all the staff, um, and doing different kind of initiatives throughout the year, whether it's different quizzes or, um, different events, things like that. While in the past, we've done just one safety fair, which has been a really good success the past couple of years. I feel that more information, more interaction needs to be done instead of just one, one large piece of it. So it's another thing that I'm looking to do. The training library, uh, while we get a lot of information and a lot of our videos from SERSA, um, that's included in our work with them, there are a lot of pieces that are missing from their library. So my hope is to increase our training library this upcoming year. Different Public Works, whether it's streets, um, training, snowball training, um, police as well. I know that they need some new training, um, materials. Um, and then I'm going to look at, um, a learning management system, a way to track the training that we provide for our employees. I feel that that's a needed system as well.
Where do we have this training library? Is it at, in Public Works?
It's within SERSA. Um, is, is really a lot of the stuff that we get, so we have an online piece through them.
Okay. So you don't actually have a place where there's books and manuals, it's more online?
We do actually. I was shown the safety closet at, at Public Works that has a lot of DVDs and, and some older training manuals as well. Yes. Yes.
Basically, sorry, but if we take a step back and just, perhaps I should know this, just kind of the, the job description, what you feel your scope is? Because I'm picturing in my head sort of an OSHA job safety, on-the-job-safety sort of scope. But I think you're going a little beyond that to also stress safety within the community?
I, um, I think, I don't know that the, the community safety is part of my job. At this moment, it's a brand-new position, so it's definitely something that could be added in the future. But it wasn't brought up with this position.
David, do you mean like emergency operation plans, that kind of emergency response stuff in the community?
Well, we had, I think, a safety fair at the park this summer with a bunch of sort of safety-related vendors, providers, first responders. I mean, is, is that something that would fall under per purview?
Yeah, yeah, that, that is something that would fall under. But yeah, it's, it's mostly an organization-focused safety position, so it's a lot more just how we interact with the community, how we do our jobs, um, our liabilities, that kind of stuff. Workman's comp. So it's a lot more of an organizational-focused position.
I will also, um, be the ADA coordinator as well. Um, next year, SERSA provides, um, training to become certified as an ADA coordinator. So I will be, um, doing that for internal and external facilities as well for that.
I want to say I really appreciate updating the safety manual and tracking the training. That's excellent. Uh, do we know if we had any, um, OSHA complaints this last year? Or do we know what our injury rate is?
I don't know what the injury rate is. And do you know we did not have any complaints?
Okay, I didn't think so.
No.
Do we typically have some on-the-job injuries? I know we do in the police department.
Um, yes, we've had, um, a few this past year. I'd say they're probably my, my biggest group of, of on-the-job injuries. We've had a few that have occurred during training. And several, um, we had a dog bite. We had an assault by a couple, I think there were two assaults by combatant individuals.
And I don't know if I should ask, ask you or Dean, but excuse me if I missed this, Dean, but the reason we've gone 15,000 to 114,000 in this department, were, were some of these functions performed by, by other departments in the past? Or is this, are we completely getting a new department going here?
I can answer to that if you'd like.
Well, yeah, it's just because we, we haven't had this position before, so this division is just... Yes, sir. Yeah, this is, uh, we, we've hired it for this year, so we'll have about six months of data in this year. And then next year will be the full year.
Okay.
I think you're good to go on.
Okay.
Be safe. All right. Next will be Public Works, Terry Walker.
Just a little bit to add on to what Jackie was, and Shane had talked about. Uh, one of her, um, goals, uh, in the near future will be the emergency management operations within the town. Make sure that all the employees have the emergency ICS training that they need to have. And then supervisors and stuff have to go above and beyond, uh, what the normal employee has to do. So they're way, they're aware of what the incident command system, uh, wants out of them and how, how to manage everything during an incident. So she'll play a big part in that as well. Okay, on to Public Works.
What page of the budget is?
Fifteen.
Okay.
And, um, so, um, finance provided, this piece right here is just a list that goes straight down. Uh, everyone should have a copy of this and, um, you've got a by department of eighty, eighty-three.
So new for 2019, uh, proposed staff changes would be bringing on the Director of Public, Public Services, uh, October of next year. Uh, a part-time administrative assistant to, to help Kim out. So she's not the only one, she's the only one there right now. And when she's gone to lunch or she's dealing with other contractors, it's tough for, no one's answering the phone. Or if she's on vacation, you know, no one's answering the phone. So, uh, that will be nice to have another administrative assistant. The utility technician for sewer and water will be, uh, a person that can, will have the, um, certification to work at the wastewater treatment plant, but also be able to help, uh, in water and sewer in town as a utility technician. So that way, that person can serve on-call to help out Dennis and Lance, since they're the only two at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, they won't be on-call every weekend to, uh, handle everything. They'll be able to rotate. And, um, so that's why that position's in there. And then, um, since, um, we lost our facilities manager over a year ago, um, we need to get the facilities manager back on deck and get a facilities management plan put together for all of our buildings, a facilities master plan. Because as we all know, Town Hall's full, um, police department's getting to where it's full. Uh, so we need to have a master plan put together to identify the availability of rooms and employees at each location and then be able to determine as we grow, when those places are going to be filled and when we may need to build a new police station, where that may be, need to be located. Maybe Public Works needs to have a, um, a pilot area out by Highland Meadows where trucks and stuff are coming out of, rather than all in one place. Uh, but we need to have someone look and develop a master plan. So, uh, we all know what's the best, uh, for the town of ones that are moving into the future. Yeah.
I'm assuming, I think that Director of Public Services is a shared cost at this point?
Well, no, that, that's just because that just includes October through December. So again, there's going to be basically three new hires with the reorganization. Uh, and in order, it would be, uh, Community Development Director first and then, um, right, then second would be Director of Public Services. And then the third would be the Administrative Services in 2020. So, um, the board did express during that reorganization that, that, um, I heard from quite a few of you that you thought that this should, we should try to do this sooner than October, but the budget was already kind of, you know, prepared by staff. So again, like anything else in the budget, you know, we're taking direction for the boards, SGS, let's try to get this position hired sooner. We could certainly adjust the budget amount there and try to make this hire sooner. But it's just, uh, this is more of, of staff forecast, when we could actually practically bring somebody on.
But this was a new position, right?
Yes, sir.
That's going to oversee, exist two current departments? So is the cost of that position showed in, shown in those two?
Well, it's, it's...
It's a new department?
Yeah, i- it's, it's new overseeing. So the cost for next year would be the, the $40,000 they hired in, um, October. And the total cost of the position is, yeah, well, 126,000. And so that's just kind of the median salary budget number.
Yeah.
So, so it is, um, but again, right now it's reflected just with that October hire.
And then on the, on the facilities manager, I'm just, my memory is that Parks and Rec was talking about, I think in the, uh, Rec Center, that there was a facilities manager who had left.
Yes, uh...
Is that this position or?
They'll remain in charge of anything that's at CRC. Uh, but the facilities manager that I'm talking about will oversee all the other facilities and be able to help out if the CRC needs help. And hopefully, if we get a facilities manager on board, we can start doing, uh, yearly, put the assets together at each building. So we know in 10 years, the HVAC unit's going to have to be replaced. Um, the intercom's going to have to be replaced after so many years. So we can put together a capital plan outlining all those needs at all the different facilities.
Okay.
Terry, I have a question.
Yeah.
Uh, the salaries, are all these, these are not part of the 295,000 in Public Works expenditures, correct? They're spread out among other funds here?
Uh, well, where are you at?
Eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen?
Oh, right, the wages.
Yeah.
Um, so this one, the, the 295 includes, um, basically the, the October to the end of the year for Director of Public Services. So that's in there. It also includes Director of Public Works, uh, the Assistant Director of Public Works, which is a position that the board authorized earlier this year. And I think we're, um, I don't know if we started advertising for that yet, but...
Uh, I think as of Friday, we started advertising for it.
And then also the administrative assistant. So those are all there.
In that 295?
Yes, ma'am. Um, the other one is like the, the facilities are actually under the facilities fund.
Okay.
Um, the facility technician is probably split between water and sewer, so the, the other one's broken out.
And the guys that do the roads are in the streets and alleys?
Right, that's right.
So, so for further clarification though, this Director of Public Services is going to be between Public Works and Parks and Rec? Forty grand is only half? Because is there another 40 grand coming out of Parks and Rec?
It's, it's just reflected in, in Public Works, but because they're both general fund, a general fund, I mean, you could show them out of either and it's...
Oh, so, but that is the total. There's not another dollar now coming?
That is the total for, for 2019 with an October hire. So again, the, the total for the position, um, we're benchmarking at 126,000. That would be a full-year salary cost. So this is basically just a, a four-month, um, four months of that salary.
Thank you, ma'am. That was my question. I was trying to get at...
I, that's, I, I thought that's what you were trying to get at.
Yeah, so again, because this is, um, because both, you know, the Public Works regular fund and Parks are both general fund, we could reflect it under Parks, we could reflect it under Public Works. Um, when we actually get the position and we kind of go through the exercise of saying, okay, how much time are they spending with different things? I think we'll, we'll take a more introspective look as far as where we're filling the salary out. But right now, it's just reflected in Public Works.
But it actually is going to oversee both of those departments at the end? And so realistically, if that is the case, that 126 needs to be divided?
It, it will be.
Totally, throughout all those departments, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions on this slide? Next is water, sewer, and storm drainage. Um, as all of you are well aware of, we are now, need to meet compliance with the new MS4 regulations concerning the stormwater. And, um, we have to have all the BMPs in place to be able to, to manage that. We have about five years to get everything in place, get the code up to date, and several other things that are involved. We did increase pay for, um, you'll see this throughout a couple of slides, for water and sewer employees. So when we have to call them out for snow removal, um, they're going to get a little better benefit than just a dollar an hour for being on-call.
So, so to just add a little bit more detail, so if you're on-call on a Monday night, um, you get a dollar an hour for being on-call under our current policy. So it's eight dollars is what you receive. So if you say, okay, well, you're off, Miles, have a good night. And by the way, I don't care if you want to go to the hockey game or do anything else. You really can't do anything, you're on-call. And we compensate people eight dollars for that. And that's true in Parks and Public Works. So, um, this has been kind of a morale issue. Um, I've, I've heard from all the leadership team that it's just kind of a policy that doesn't really seem that equitable to people. Um, so instead of doing the eight dollars on a weeknight, it would be a flat 25 dollars. So it's, um, three times as good as it had been, but again, it's just saying, you're on-call, you're staying at home tonight, you can't do anything. Here's 25 dollars for doing that. Um, and then on the weekend, uh, we were giving people a dollar an hour, so it had been 24. So this budget reflects double that. So it'd be 50 dollars, so basically another 25 dollars for just kind of, I guess, two dollars an hour for being on-call.
Do they volunteer to be on-call or is it just random?
No.
Well, we have shifts that we put everybody in. So if, if your shift is the shift on-call, that means, you know, you can't be out drinking. You can't, you, you need to be around and be able to go on-call when we call you out. So, uh, this way, it, it, it makes the employee feel like it's worth not going and having a drink if I'm getting, you know, a little bit more money.
I mean, it could be other things. It could just be driving to Denver for the day here.
It could be, yeah. Just going out of town for anything.
Especially like if you're week, and if you're on-call on a Saturday and you can't leave Windsor, you basically have to stay here. I mean, um, to get a dollar an hour for that, doesn't seem that, I'll have work for close to $2 an hour, but they'll sleep for Sunday. Ian, any questions on that?
With all the new accounts, of course, um, we have to increase postage, uh, to get all the new water bills and stuff out for next year. And then we just signed, uh, we will be signing a three-year contract with Vector Disease Control that shows a two-and-a-half percent increase each year for the mosquito control. And as you can see, the first year it'll be at 95, second year 97, third year 100,000. And the reason that two-and-a-half percent increase comes in is we're growing so quick and they have so much more to manage that, um, they need to get a two-and-a-half percent increase in order to bring on the necessary people needed in order to find all of those areas and, and take care of them. Any questions on that? Fleet and facilities.
I'm sorry, Terry.
Yeah?
I, I wasn't sure you were talking about departments, but I think, Dean, if I can ask you a question, just because I'm trying to interpret these sheets. And if I look at the sewer fund on page A57, if you could kind of hold my hand a little bit, because if, if I'm looking at 2017 actual, the beginning fund balance is 4.2 million.
Yes.
We have additional revenues during the course of the year, bringing in 6.5 million. And then the, all of the expenses that carry down is, it looks like 2.9 million, which would suggest there'd be 3 million left. But then the following year, we start with a beginning balance of negative 1.9. Well, fund balance.
If you, if you look, the O and M portion of the sewer fund is actually two sections. It's, it's that one there on A57. That's, that ends with that 2.9 expenditures you were talking about. And then the other one begins, the other part begins on A59 and ends on A60, which is, uh, roughly 1 million dollars. So you see on the last line on A60 there, that roughly 4 million dollars, that was the total sewer fund O and M for that year.
Got it, okay.
Okay? It's broken into the collection system itself and the plant itself. Did that answer your question?
I'll, I'll come to your office sometime. I don't want to burden everybody, but...
The next question is, why is it negative if we had 6 million?
Well, we started on the actual, in, in 2017 at the top of page 57. We had 4.2 as the beginning fund balance. We had, we had 4 million in expenditures. I don't, I don't think that's supposed to be a negative up there.
Unless it, there was capital money spent out of here that's not reflected in this?
No, the capital is in the, in the pages after page 62.
Okay.
So, so was our beginning fund balance the 2.9?
In which year?
A, in 2018.
Basically, I think this is supposed to be...
2018, but...
It, it would have been that one, that 1.9 but, uh, number, but not in parentheses.
Just a positive.
That's what I thought, that's...
Okay.
That's a big difference.
Yeah.
When will it work? Whoops. Missed a file this much.
Anyway, Dean, I'm, sorry, Terry.
That's okay.
I'll stop by your office sometime. All right.
So new changes for 2019 for fleet and facilities is we've installed GPS in all of our snow fighting equipment. So supervisors and, uh, can see where the trucks are at any given time. So if someone's calling and complaining about a truck has been by their house, we'll know whether it's been by their house, when it was by their house, where it is now. Um, it, it's going to be a lot better for us because, um, you know, we can actually prove them wrong if they say, well, they plowed, you know, the snow over my sidewalk, but we haven't had a plow down your street. So, um, it's going to help in all different aspects of it.
And that's not viewable by the public?
That was Park City, that was a public work.
It, it's usually when that happens, it's some guy out with a plow on his pickup thinking he's helping the neighborhood and he isn't. So, um, once again, you'll see the increased pay for fleet and facilities, also for snow removal. Um, we need to look at, uh, putting some money in the budget for this year. We do have some in IT for security for Town Hall. But we need to identify how we're going to block off the areas so people can only use the elevator to get from floor to floor. You know, that's the only entrance coming into the Town Hall. And we don't want people being able to go downstairs, get off on any floor. You know, it, the security is just too high-risk here. So we want to try to get a company on board to help us determine what's the best possible way and the most economical way to, to fix the security here at Town Hall. So, um, Shane and I haven't talked about how much that is, but, uh, we are definitely looking into that. So not only do the people that work here all day feel better, but also the nighttime custodians. So people aren't coming in and then hiding out in the basement or whatever the case might be. So the last thing is, let's talk a little bit about the recycling center. We're going to have to relocate that now that we've leased out, um, everything out of Diamond Valley. And, um, if we move the recycling center out to where the Public Works area is now, to the farm just to the north, Eric has talked to the farmer, we could, he's willing to give us 10 of the acres that he would not farm that we could utilize for the recycle center. But, um, that would be just for your commodities. It would should be glass, plastic, cardboard, those types of things. The brush recycling is, uh, we'll get to a little bit later here. Um, it's cost us about almost 87 and a half thousand dollars, uh, to, um, take care of the brush recycling. And, um, you know, seems like a lot of money. It's more than doubled. And it'll keep doing that because of the cost of...
Hey, Terry, you've got that in a couple of slides from now.
Yeah, I think I do. So here it is. The sale of our recycling commodities is down because all the tariffs and stuff, um, China isn't getting all the plastic that they once wanted or could have. Uh, the brush recycling, the revenue was 42,600. This last year was 9,700. Uh, and brush removal for 2018 was going to go up 45,000, which would double to almost 90,000 in 2019. So our revenue isn't coming close to offsetting the expenditures.
How come it went down so much? They went from 42,600 to less than 10 grand?
Well, Hegeman that was doing the brush recycling, we locked him in for a certain amount. I think it was like $3.18 for the first number of years we did it. And he said it'd be $5 or more if he was going to continue.
Oh, that's money that we make on this stuff when we sell.
Right, so when we leased that out to Colorado Sports Park, they were willing to take the brush recycling as part of that. So we saved that money, but it would have cost us in the neighborhood of about 90,000 dollars.
Does this include our permits that folks are buying too? Does this include our permits that folks are buying too?
Yes.
So we are having not nearly as many folks buying the permits either?
Uh, evidently not because the revenue is showing that it's went down immensely. So, um, I don't know whether they're taking it straight to Hegeman, which, you know, they're only four miles away. So it's, it's not like if we take the brush recycling away, people won't have anywhere to take it. They can take it direct to Hegeman right off Prospect and, um, drop it off there and, um, then we wouldn't have to deal with it any longer. But that's something that if the board wants to talk about, we can talk about it. Um, but we just don't have an area right now, since we've leased all that out, to be able to handle all the brush recycling. So there's, it's twofold.
What would we do with all the town materials then? Like the leaves that we are gonna be, you know, that we gather in the streets and/or like after we've had a couple of, um, other hailstorms that brought all the limbs down, the town went through, where would we take our stuff?
We would take our stuff probably out to the public work site and then later haul it off to the dump. Um.
So you do have a place that you could keep internal collection materials?
And we've even talked to staff, um, you know, but some programs like Christmas tree recycling is just something that the town should offer. I think a lot of communities offer that and don't have a place to put those. So we've talked about i- if we didn't have a pure brush, brush recycling, what services could we still offer to the public? Like, we still accommodate. Um, so we talked some, because I think another thing we could do too is just if we did have Hegeman come out to grind some, it would just be a lot less. You know, we're just doing Christmas trees and maybe some internal brush. It would just be a lot less volume. So there'd still be a cost to us. It would just be significantly less than what we're paying right now.
We've also entertained the thought of having a cleanup day, um, in the summer, like we used to have prior to the tornado, um, to where we could identify what people could bring to a certain site. We could have vendors there in order to take that, uh, from those people and dispose of it properly. Um, so, uh, we've been talking about that and we'll try to get something scheduled for two thousand nineteen. Yeah, Tom?
So Terry, brush removal is what? They bring, the citizens bring this brush out to recycling area and then we haul it somewhere?
Well, they bring it out to the recycling area and then once a year we grind it up. Hegeman keeps half of the grindings and we get half. But at five dollars a cubic yard, um, it, it, that's why it's up to about ninety thousand to, uh, get that pile, you know, taken care of once a year.
And we do have like commercial entities that bring the brush there, right?
Right. A lot of commercial trucks. And the problem with the commercial trucks is you see the branches on the top, but you don't know what's on the bottom of that truck. And sometimes when they dump, there's concrete and there's, you know, all of this stuff. Well, you don't know until, um, later after they've dumped it. So it's, and that's what tears up the, um, machinery for Hegeman. And that's why he doesn't want to do it as GP as he has been because he swore up his equipment. He got a shop put in one of them one year. He's had concrete and then he has to, it costs him a lot of money to get his, uh, grinders repaired.
But are we faced with hauling anything to waste management or anything like that?
We, we do, um, as we get all the leaves that Christie was talking about and all of our piles of sweepings, we load that up and haul it to, uh, the dump, uh, as we get enough. Um, so we do that several times a year.
Do we get a deal on the tipping fees or we pay what everybody else does?
We pay what everybody else does.
So why are we still gonna spend ninety thousand twenty nineteen when we just got rid of a whole pile for free?
Well, that would, that was in there prior to the lease being finalized.
Right.
Well, but I think if, if we continued on with that program.
Right.
It would be, it would be the presumption that we build up a whole new stockpile again in twenty nineteen.
A whole new pile and then that gets just, that gets, uh, disposed of before the end of the year?
Yep.
So it would still be in next year's budget then?
It, it would be.
Potentially get rid of the same size pile again.
That, that's the theory. And again, you know, I, I think, you know, in talking to Terry, uh, Hegeman's bid has been extremely competitive. You know, uh, quite a bit compared to anybody else who's doing this work. So, you know, ninety thousand may be optimistic on our end.
And are we still gonna spend forty-five thousand this year if we don't have to remove our pile at all?
We, we don't have to do anything with our pile this year at all.
They just said it's expected.
Right.
But we're not gonna spend that. We're not gonna spend that because we didn't.
No, but we, we put it in the budget because we wanted to talk to you as the board about it. So, uh, we had it in the budget. If we needed it, if we don't, we can take it out.
Okay. So, and Miles?
You have a question on the revenue on page, um, one of the revenue that says brush recycling revenue fifty-seven thousand. Is that? How does that reconcile with what you have here on this slide?
Uh, that's a good question. Uh, Kim had talked to, um, Megan or Cheryl to get the latest numbers. And those were the numbers that she got. So they might've been the wrong numbers.
So somebody from finance?
Yep.
Well, if you look, if you look on, uh, on page A one there.
Mm-hmm.
You can see we're projecting through the end of twenty eighteen, fifty-six and a half thousand. And I think we probably just assumed that same amount for next year. Okay.
But now that's gonna be ninety-seven hundred.
How, how, how do you write it in ninety?
Well, that, that's just, uh.
On the slide?
Yeah, the slide says ninety-seven hundred.
Yeah.
Oh, ninety-seven hundred. I thought you meant ninety-seven thousand.
Maybe misspoke.
Well, we can, we can change that. I think we, we did this. That's, I'm, I'm pretty sure that's what we did on, we just took the projection and rounded it up.
Just assumed it happened.
If we have a better number, we can substitute that.
I guess that's a question on this slide because the third, the second dash says the revenue for brush recycling is gonna be ninety-seven hundred. And the next line down talks about brush removal expect, and I don't know whether that's a revenue or expense.
That's expense.
Brush removal is expected to be forty-five thousand, doubling to ninety. Is that?
Yeah.
Revenue or expense?
No, that's expense. That's expense.
So we had ninety-seven hundred in revenue and ninety thousand in expense.
Right.
Yeah. How long can you run a business like that?
Well.
Seriously?
So, I mean, I mean, I think this is Lawrence's discussion and why I, you know, I was a big proponent of keeping this facility. But I don't know that I know, I don't know that I any longer am. I've also had citizens who've told me that because we raised the fee, what, from two fifty to five dollars, it's too expensive and they're not going anymore. So, I mean, it's like, seriously?
Where are they going?
Hegeman.
I don't know where they're going, but they're, they're complaining that five dollars is too much. And so I think I would be more of a proponent rather than us investing in additional land for this, which doesn't even encompass everything that we need. I think I'd be much more in favor of maybe offering to our citizens a spring something one day and a fall that we bring in everybody who we need to. They can still do their, you know, for whatever that fee is that day or, you know, or maybe there's not, out of fee or whatever, however it works. So they still have the ability to do it, but we're not encumbered with hiring personnel and maintenance and ongoing because we're not even making that much use of the material. I mean, we've used pretty much the material that we can, right? I mean, I don't know that we have a big use for any of this recycling material anyway.
Right.
So I'm kinda thinking that maybe that our best use for this money, instead of figuring out where we, is we shut this all down and we just offer them on a annual basis, a couple times a year, the same opportunity.
Well, back in the day when we had cleanup day in June, I think it was usually, uh, the, uh, you know, the, the disposal companies did it for us for that one day, just for the PR.
Yeah.
But, uh, I don't know if that'd still be the case.
Yeah, I mean, normally you can get like, uh, the counted away tipping fees that day. You can get other donations and other, other deals for Community White Cleanup Day. So. Um, and then also even if you have, um, people charging, if we can get a better deal on tires, a better deal on, on computer screens and monitors. You know, I think that if we can line up these vendors, like Terry said in the beginning, I think we should be able to get a better deal for residents to just say, hey, if you've got hazardous waste, you know, we've got a trailer for that. We've got a trailer for your computer screens and all these other household things that kind of build up in our garages and not anywhere else to make them.
I think that's what's been so successful with our Take Back Day with our police force, right? I mean, it's, it's an annual thing. Our folks know when to expect it and they, they take it there. And then they've got all the things arranged for people to properly dispose of whatever they get.
Yeah, I support keeping the brush recycling. I've been advocate. We subsidize all sorts of things in town. And, um, part of our mission is being good stewards of the environment. I think this goes along with that. I mean, people are just gonna put this back in the trash can and then it goes to the dump and what it's not supposed to be. I think we should keep it.
I think we're still being good stewards if we offer the program a couple times a year. And most of all the waste disposal companies offer recycling as part of your, I mean, my trash company, I mean, all the trash companies offer a recycling component to their thing. I think we can still show that we are still very good stewards, but, I mean, I, but what I'm hearing folks who say, I'm not gonna use it anyway just because of the cost.
Why don't we get rid of commercial then?
We talked about that when we talked about not beating the fee, was getting rid of the commercial component. Or charging commercial more to offset the residential.
What I'm just looking at, it's obviously something that folks are not using that much anyway if our numbers are down that much.
What does Hegeman charge for residential compared to what we charge right now? Like if, if people had to take it somewhere else?
I think, uh, if you, if you drive it straight to Hegeman.
Yeah.
I think it's like six dollars or seven dollars a load, depending on whether it's a pickup or, you know, a truck or, you know, it goes up in value from there.
So this is a buck or two more than what we charge per load, something like that?
But.
Is it a lot more than that?
It's probably more. I live in Fort Collins. It's like seven dollars a yard. It's like an average truck is five or six yards. It's like ninety-fourty-five a truck.
Something's not making sense here.
I know because.
Hegeman's more expensive and you gotta drive further. Doesn't make sense, does it? Uh, I, I still, I'm listening to the arguments here and I, I, I think we do need to encourage people to be good stewards of the environment. So I'm in favor of even three or four times a year, uh, some, I hate to call it a cleanup day uh, because I've heard some communities do that and people just wait because they think they're gonna get, can give it away for free. Right, they get rid of all the junk and stuff. So it'd have to be organized and good public relations and communications. But I, I see a compromise here. Um, I don't see how we'd continue to spend ninety thousand dollars a year though.
I don't either. I mean, I'm, I'm just, I'm really just, I mean, I guess I'm really surprised that our numbers that, that are, are down that much. I thought our folks really were using this and it's abs, it's showing us the opposite.
Well, you have to remember that a couple of those years, we had the bad snowstorms that took down a lot of branches. So everybody needed to utilize it. Um, and then last year we didn't have a snowstorm that did that. So, you know.
What's, what's the rolling average then?
Uh, I don't know. I'd have to look back at the.
Okay, that's all right. Yeah.
When was it that we implemented the new fees?
Two years ago.
The last?
No, no.
Last year.
No, it was, yeah.
This year.
Early this year.
Yeah, it was earlier this year.
We raised it to three or something.
That was a spectator.
Remember we argued about making an even number?
Five. It was five.
It went to five.
Five and fifteen. Five and fifteen.
Five and fifteen. So that's a big change.
Right.
And, and I can check with Hegeman to find out exactly what their prices are. Um, but rather than us handle it, maybe a couple times a year, we could have a coupon to give wins of residents that, um, it would be paid for if they took it to Hegeman. Because then we wouldn't have to handle it. We wouldn't have to have a place for it. Um, and people could, uh, come to the town hall or wherever and pick up the coupon.
Yeah. Yeah, I think there's ways that we can still be good stewards and show that we want to encourage that without being encumbered with having, operating a facility, which obviously we don't have the capacity to do.
Right.
Even if we weren't having to move the site, we've had a lot of issues and problems with operating that, that place. So I think it makes sense that we leave that operation to those folks who know how to do it. And I like thinking about getting creative in how we, I don't know, encourage our folk. Maybe we still have a couple times a year here, but we also maybe do some things with folks that enable them to go other places. Um.
I think a key though is what we've been saying. We need to encourage our people to dispose of things in a proper way. And to make that as, as convenient as possible.
Yeah, because I can't tell you how many times we found stuff that's just dumped by the gate.
Well, and so I'm on the, the Hegeman site right now.
Yeah.
And, um, so they, for, for woody material, uh, they charge seven dollars and fifty cents per yard. And they say an eight-foot truck bed holds about three yards of material. So what a truckload would be twenty-two to fifty. And then for yard garden waste, um, it's, full-size truck is ten dollars and twenty-five cents. So that's, they're, they're on their website right now.
But they monitor what they are getting in, so they don't get anything hazardous or bad. They know it was something that they.
They have people out there all the time watching what's being dumped and.
Well, and I would propose that it's, that it's, it's like through utility billing, that it's a coupon for like fifty percent off with Hegeman. So the residents still have some money in it, but yet it's our portion that we would be offsetting. It takes a lot to reach ninety thousand dollars, you know. Odds are, I would think we'd still come out ahead and then we don't have the headaches and.
Yeah.
The loss leader and all of that.
I could support that because it, yeah, it's encouraging stewardship and cleaning of the community.
And if it is only four or five, six miles up the road.
Right.
It's four to five, six miles to get from Highland Meadows out to the brush recycling right now.
And play on the idea that Paul's suggesting that some kind of coupon with the water bill, that would be going to our residents. So we know it's our residents that we're helping.
That's right.
Unless it's a good way.
And maybe, maybe, maybe the fine print is that commercials not eligible for this, that this is strictly for, you know, residential.
Residential.
Redeem, redemption, you know.
Well, I think we'd have to limit it to like three yards to, you know, dump.
Right, right.
Um, and, and we would have to talk about, you know, how, how we would track that. We need to track that somehow. People couldn't just print out a thousand coupons. Uh, and then we also have a lot of town residents that are actually town bar customers. So, um, you know, we have people who are with well, uh, well water. We also have people who are with, uh, level of water costs.
We're creating a whole new bureaucracy.
But we still get a town, I, I'm in Laramie County, so I don't, I still get the town of Windsor bill, just there's no water.
Yeah, yeah, you get the storm drain.
Yeah.
Just put out cross size.
Yeah, so I still get the whatever you guys send out. So it's, so I think it'd still get to everybody.
Yeah, I would just think if I, we, I don't know if we could reduplicate it to where it would have like a, a unique number on it. It's more, we would track it. Um, but yeah, it's, it's a good thought. I mean, I like the idea.
There, we, we could have a code or something on it that, you know, I don't know. There's gotta be some way we could do it.
So you request a staff person to do this?
Yeah.
I'm joking.
Hold on. Yeah, next budget presentation.
You're ninety thousand.
We've got our coupon tracker position.
But anyway, we can, we can keep talking about that and, um, you know, I think something in the spring or fall is good too. Uh, we kinda got away from that after the tornado because, um, you know, everybody kinda get, got rid of everything after the tornado. We were busy rebuilding everything. So, uh, we can incorporate that back in. So, any other questions on that?
Nope. So what will you do from here? Can you look at what that, what that looks like, what that goes to the budget?
I'm even thinking if we just did, uh, like a newsletter or something with a, with a bill and just said, uh, you know, we're gonna just continue the service. If you take it to a local company, bring us in the receipt and we'll reimburse, you know, the first three yards every year or something. It may be easier to track it that way because then we can do it by home when they bring it in. Um, but yeah, let, let me talk to Terry and to our communication staff and Eric and just see.
Well, you probably have to talk to the supplier too and make sure that all is going.
Well, the, the other thing that would do for us, if we could track that, then if, um, we could get some contractor in the future that might wanna locate here, like a Hegeman, uh, he would know how much, um, you know, revenue he would be bringing in uh, if he proposed to do something like that.
But under, under Shane's proposal, Hegeman wouldn't be in the accounting. But under, under Shane's proposal, Hegeman wouldn't be in the accounting, you know, business, he's saying they pay what they've gotta pay to get rid of it there and then bring us the receipt and we'll reimburse up to ten dollars or something, right?
That might be, that might be an easier management system process.
I think it'd be a lot easier to track that way, 'cause it'd be, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Your house on Kitty Hawk, we got you down for the year, it's not.
Keep it simple. So if we're promoting that, maybe some of the contractors would give our residents a discount.
Okay, so for streets, what's new? Um, the vendor that we've been using for a number of years that do, did all of our paint striping, um, is going out of business, he's selling everything. Um, so we've got, uh, costs from other contractors and so that's gonna go up to two hundred, from a hundred and twenty-nine to two oh five. The reason being, the guy that we used before lived here in Windsor, his name, the company was Fine Lines and he always gave Windsor a break because he lived here and he, he wanted to give his hometown, um, you know, a break on everything. But now that, uh, he's getting out of the business, uh, we sent out RFPs and like I say, it's gonna be two hundred and five thousand now to get, uh, the same amount of work done.
And this isn't anything we can even begin to accomplish in-house?
No, we would have to buy a truck and we'd have to have, um, several other employees.
Did you buy one of his old trucks?
I, I think street striping is, is one of the most common things that a department would contract out. Um, if you do little hand striping for like crosswalks and, and parking, uh, I think departments can bring that kinda thing in-house, but when you look at big street striping, these guys have so much money to that capital, it's just contract deal.
We, we will, I have talked to our street crew and we are gonna try to do the thermal markings ourselves, so, you know, that'll save us money, um, so if we have the amount of people to where we can do that and do it safely, we will be doing the thermal markings around town rather than having the contractor do it. So, we can track that and see how much money, you know, we're saving by doing that in-house. We have contacted, uh, a contractor to help us with snowstorms in the event we get eight-plus inches or more to where the cul-de-sacs need plowed. Uh, this contractor would deal with just mainly the cul-de-sacs and local streets if we needed him to, um, and so ten storms would cost us about sixty thousand dollars. It's based on each year of how many employees he has in the area that are in the, the equipment to be able to help us out. This contractor's GLH, they're from Windsor, um, so he's, he's willing to help us out in the event that, um, we can't keep up and, and, uh, those cul-de-sacs need plowed. So, we have money in the budget for that as well.
How much do you have total for snow plowing this year? Or do you, or do you look at it that way?
We don't, really don't look at, we don't put a budget, amount in the budget for snow plowing, we just do cardiograph, we track each snowstorm and what it costs us, so.
And what do you do? Are you planning for like a three-year, the three-year average or how do you?
We just, you know, you can't stop what Mother Nature's gonna give you, so, uh, whatever comes to, it comes to and then we handle it.
Part of the general thing comes through.
Yeah, 'cause I'm asked, what, why I'm asking is, I mean, they're predicting, uh, a very heavy winter season this year with lots of, lots of precipitation.
And, and.
So if we, if you go over budget, we, what, what is the protocol? He has to come back to, to make a request?
Well, it would be like, where we spend money with snow plowing is personnel, it's paying overtime, it's, it's more fuel in the trucks, it, it's more sand and stuff, so it wouldn't even be coming back, it would just be, it'd be, um, just things we'd say, or we budgeted twenty thousand for overtime and we spent thirty thousand, y'all remember the bad snow season, so we, we don't really stop operations, you know, if we just have an unusually winter year, we're gonna find more fuel than we planned and, and, um, you know, if we're, if that's happened in January, February, March, you know, we can kinda look at the budget that year and say, okay, there are ways we can save now, but we know we've spent so much money on snow plowing personnel, so we, we try to get caught up at the end of the year, but it's not, like Terry said, there's, don't really have a snow plow budget, it's just people and fuel and, you know, that, that's where the money goes.
D I C material.
Now, is that sixty thousand, is that like a retainer? That we, that we pay to get to the top of the list if we, so we can, we can just assume six thousand per time?
We sign a contract with them, we're their first priority, so in the event that, they get a call from us, they have to respond and, um, I'll meet them out in the field where I want them to work at and show them what I want done, um, and then they will, they'll just start on it and, and try to get it done as quickly as possible.
And, and we're actually hoping to bring on more than one contractor, I hope to have a, a, a handful of folks we can call on. So again, it's, you know, with Public Works, um, we have basically everybody on a vehicle, um, we have some of our greener people that have more experienced people on their vehicles, so, you know, we, we've just, we've got, we're throwing everything we have at it, we have parks folks on the vehicles and we're still, if we get a big storm, we may be out of people, so, uh, you know, to really get out in the residential areas, so I think that contracting for the service, really looking at that standard to really hit these residential areas, when our staff is focused on Main Street and the school zones and everywhere else, uh, is a responsible way to, to address the snow without bringing on a lot more personnel folks, buying a lot more plow trucks, because there's only two ways to do it. And, um, you know, if, if we can kinda lease the people, even six thousand in a storm, it's more than we pay our own folks to do it, but when you say, well, just sixty thousand dollars, I mean, you're not, you're not paying for much with that if you bring them in-house.
But if we have five storms instead of ten, we don't owe him sixty, he's gonna charge six, six thousand.
It's per hour by the apparatus that they're using.
Yeah, so we're, we're estimating six thousand a storm, to answer your question, so that's not a retainer, we're, we're just estimating it's gonna run us about six thousand per storm based on the personnel and hours they would have, um, so that's why you're saying ten storms will cover sixty thousand. So if we use them once, we estimate we'll spend about six thousand dollars for that.
Shane, is that number, I'm assuming this would be under Streets and Alley's?
Yes.
What page are you on?
Uh, A fourteen. There's, uh, Contract Services, a hundred and twelve thousand, is that sixty buried in that one twelve?
Let me pull up, yes it is, it sure is.
Yeah. But I think to the mayor's point, maybe, who knows, yeah, I may hate to get in the weeds, but maybe we track cost of snow removal, um, in, in Adelina, although, 'cause there's in, there's internal costs too, right? Not contract services.
Well.
And those, I think what I heard you say is they're sort of just buried in the.
Well, it, it's, it's, it's in, it's in wages and overtime.
Right.
It, it's in the material, so like the, the, the sand mix and, um, mag or whatever else Terry and these guys are buying. What's that?
Fuel.
Yeah, fuel, uh, that kinda stuff, I mean, that's where it is, so it i, it is shown in here, it's just, um, you know, not all the overtime we're gonna spend this year, is it snow removal? I guess we could try to, to curl that out a little bit better and say this is how much we estimate we're gonna spend in overtime for, for, uh, snow removal, but other than that, it's kinda hard to break this other stuff out. You know, like the material we put down is just for snow removal, right?
In cardiograph, we track everyone's hours, um, fuel, uh, any material that's put on the road, uh, blades that are put on the plow, whatever is done during a snowstorm is tracked through cardiograph. So after each storm, I can come in and say, town board, this last storm cost X amount of dollars. And, um, you know, Windsor's one of the few that still do local streets and so that's why it costs us a little more, but, um, you know, we do the local streets where the bigger cities aren't anymore, unless they get like eight inches or more like we are with cul-de-sacs. Yeah, Paul?
Uh, last line on here, maybe this is a question for Dean, what's information tech transfer?
It's, uh, we have our IT department has its own, uh, fund, an internal service fund and we have, we pay for all of our people out of their replacement equipment, that type of thing. So what I do is when, when somebody needs some help with their computer of, you know, printer, a computer, a pro, a program, what have you, they enter a work ticket in our, in our some managed software and we can print reports out of that as to, uh, how many, you know, how, like how many did the street department submit? And then we use those numbers to allocate the cost of the IT fund over the, over the various users.
So where do we come up with that number? 'Cause I, it, that's a new management of, uh, accounting here, 'cause we've never had that.
Well, I, we, we've been doing that transfer for quite a while.
This is the first time we broke down streets, I believe. There's a couple of them that are too long.
All right, yeah, didn't we just have the bulk under Public Works before?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so.
We used to put it in Public Works.
This transfer has always happened, it's just, this is the first time we've gone through and instead of just doing the bulk transfer out of Public Works, we actually broke it up between Streets and Sewer and everybody else, so it's just a little bit more of a, um, you know, trying to allocate the, the fair share to each department, i, it's just a continuation of that exercise.
The one thing that I don't see and maybe it's, I don't know if it's gonna be somewhere else, but do we have a line item anywhere for transportation? So like Windsor committed a million dollars to the I twenty-five project, which we're paying three hundred thousand for the next three years. And from what I've been told, um, from, you know, MP, my MPO colleagues and CDOT, that in the future, if there is an opportunity for a project, they're gonna expect municipalities to participate and to, uh, provide some funding and I know we're going through the US thirty-four PEL study right now, so there's gonna be some things and some opportunities I would envision coming out of that study in the next two to three years and I think if we, that we need to have a transportation line item to, somewhere to, so that if and when there is that call that says, hey folks, we can do X, Y, Z, but it means you all have to participate in this way, we've got some funding allocated.
Meaning if we wanted to commit another million dollars to something else down the line, that we have a fund that's built up.
Yeah.
Over years, that we put a half a million a year in it or something.
Or something, yeah, so do we have that somewhere else?
We don't really have a, a line that just says transportation, I think what we do have is our unrestricted fund balance in our capital, so we'll have however many million dollars when it's all said and done of unrestricted money where the board could take and encumber part of that and just put a line that says future transportation projects, or you could also know that, that whatever we have that's not committed could be available if something came up, so.
I just wanna make sure we're prepared and not caught off guard if there's ever a request like that and, you know, we can.
I brought that question up informally before a meeting with Shane too, 'cause, you know, on several occasions now, CDOT staff have told us that they intend to have some kind of report to us by, as early as January regarding the possibility of relocating three ninety-two and my concern is the same thing, whatever comes, there's always gonna be a municipal component, usually there's another study or something, so just anticipating that we're gonna have some transportation costs coming up is very realistic, I think.
So I, I'd say it's, the, the board's pleasure, I mean, again, it's not in the budget right now, but would you prefer that, that we actually took and just pulled a line out and, and assigned, you know, five hundred thousand or a million dollars of the, of the unassigned, um, capital fund, or would you rather just know that, that whatever we have in there that's really, um, not spoken for right now, that entire fund balance could go towards something like this?
Would that be something that would be a CIP?
Yeah.
Like, not every year, that every year we're just gonna commit X amount of money in the CIP budget to go into a separate fund that could be used for capital contributions or collaboration of, uh, transportation or so, I don't know, I'm trying to think words to it, but.
As we look at our roadway improvement plan, there's a lot in there and last time we anticipated this, there was a financial shortfall certainly, so, uh, I don't know if it has to be a line item or we at least have to have an idea of when a request comes for, say, a PEL study and we have to chip in. Or if CDOT says we can repair two fifty-seven, we need to know where we're gonna pull those funds within a matter of weeks probably.
It's the capital fund. 'Cause if.
Unless we've already committed it all.
But if we do a line item and we, we don't know what year it's gonna come.
Yeah, we don't know what year or how much.
We just know it's there or unless we try to save a little every year for three years, but.
Does, does, if, 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 uh, if, uh, during a calendar year. A, a, a big capital expense need to occur, I'm thinking of like after the tornado, Mayor Vasquez said it's gonna cost a million dollars, but we need to clean up Windsor, 'cause people need to get back to their, that million dollars that was spent during the year that was obviously not budgeted, et cetera, does that type of thing require a board vote? Is that something that just comes out of the capital fund?
It, it would be a, it would be a board decision, now eventually you would need to adopt a supplemental budget that, that reflects that, but if it weren't, if it weren't in the adopted twenty nineteen, um, you know, again, local government, we're, we're a cash business, so we, we don't bet on the comp, if you've got money in the bank, you can spend it, if you don't have it, we can't spend it, so, uh, to the extent that we have that fund balance under capital, the board could make that decision this year, look, we wanna participate in this three ninety-two project, we do want to contribute one million dollars towards that and it'd be Dean and I saying, be our board, you have the money in capital right now, we have an unsure fund balance of half a million, and then we do a supplemental budget at the end of the year, or I think Dean, you guys normally do it January, February, you kinda do it at the end.
Yes.
Um, and, and then it would do that, so that's a long way of saying, yes, the board would have to adopt that and approve that, but it wouldn't have to be right then, but we would have to catch it.
On our, our first meeting, you did these little slides, we do have a capital improvement fund and we have a reserve, we could put a million dollars under the reserve, it's already got a Tabor emergency reserve, incentive for mill development, we could add CDOT, uh, project reserve and just keep that as a reserve, we don't need a separate line item, but it's just one more reserve under the capital improvement plan.
And I think that might be a good idea, because I think to your point, something you've said a couple of times, right? This board has this thinking today, but if it's not put in place, another board in years to come might not know that that's an important line item to consider if it's not called out or spelled out a little bit, right?
Yeah, and it doesn't have to get spent and if it's.
Right.
If it stays as a reserve, at least we know in our heads, we've got that million dollars.
Is, is one million dollars the number you guys would like to see? I mean, if, is that?
I think at least.
I'm okay with that.
At the end, I am okay with it, my concern is, like, I think what I heard you say is right now there is three million dollars of sort of discretionary funds sitting in the capital improvement fund.
I, I think there's more than that for our unrestricted fund balance.
Whatever the number is, my fear is if we start labeling them and you've labeled them, um, CDOT match or the others that you've mentioned, then if in fact we need two million for a CDOT match, but that fund, that line item only holds one and a half, are we putting, creating for ourselves some, some hoops, jump through to say, oops, we, we wanna reallocate?
There is, so be, be, because you guys are the board, as long as we have the cash in the fund, you could say, make it a million and a half or make it two million, and as long as we have the money, we could do that. So, so that's a short answer, I think a longer answer is, if we get into an agreement with CDOT and we said, okay, CDOT, we're willing to do this, but we need to, we don't have reflected in this year's budget, uh, you know, they're, they're an entity where things take a while, I think we had an agreement with them to say, we would reimburse you starting January first of this next year, or whatever that looks like, I'm, I'm sure that, 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 the, the real commitment from this board is gonna be, are we willing to sign a piece of paper saying we will reimburse them for however many million. I, I think the budgetary exercise is a little more academic, um, because if we have the money, we can do it and if we need to even say, we'll make the first payment next year, I'm, I'm certain that wouldn't hold up anything.
I'm confident the citizens of Windsor would, would approve of us doing that.
You know, I, I like having, uh, flexibility and discretion, but transportation, roadway improvement has been such a big issue in our community, that, and we know there's gonna be a shortfall of funds, even with the, even what we're charging the developers, it's still not enough to, uh, build, uh, complete our build out, plus if we have major projects with CDOT, uh, we're gonna have to chip in money, so I would be really supportive of your marking of, of budget line somewhere.
And both ballot initiatives are polling bad, badly right now.
Of course they are, yes, they are.
Yeah, oh yeah.
So I think.
Less than fifty percent.
You know, it wouldn't hurt us to be putting money back every year in a budget for roadway improvement or whatever we wanna call it.
Miles, what was the fund that you described it?
It's just the capital improvement fund, it was on the first.
No, I know, but you, you, there was a specific label on one of them.
There's annual depreciation, Tabor emergency reserve and then the incentive for mill, which is gonna go away.
So Tabor emergency reserve, if it turned out we wanted to tap that money for a roadway match?
No.
We can't do it?
No, we cannot. Yeah, the, the Tabor is basically, it's, um, I don't know what constitutes real emergency per Tabor, it's not really defined, um, but.
We're required to hold that?
We, we sure are. So, so that money is untouchable, the rest is.
And I would support a million, anything more of that would basically tie our hands for some big projects, so.
Well, and again, any worthwhile requests that could come from the board, to the board, if, you know, if you would get to make that judgment then as our elected officials to say, this is worthwhile, it's, it's worth, cause that, that's another thing, I don't wanna put so much money in that CDOT says, well, I know Windsor's good for two million, so we've already got it in the budget. You know, and, and so from a negotiation standpoint, I'd rather start out saying, you know, how does a hundred thousand sound and work our way up. Or say, well, we got two million dollars for your two and a half million dollar project, CDOT.
I, I was hesitating for, I was hesitating for the same reason, if they see, assume it's a line item there. But we could need to call it a transportation fund or roadway improvement, because it's not just CDOT projects.
Right.
We've got an old street, roads improvements, we may have, uh, you know, thirty-four coalition, well, let's see that, or Army Road. You know, we got lots of transportation issues.
But I think it goes a long way with CDOT too.
Yeah.
To say, hey, we're serious, we're starting the, that's right.
Okay, well, staff's heard you, uh, right now, one billion seems to be the most popular number. Um, so we can certainly make that adjustment in the, in the capital fund and, and show that. And then we're gonna have a budget recap for the capital fund, which you'll see on this upcoming meeting, uh, in one week. And so we can be sure to add that sliding.
And as a reserve, it doesn't mean it's in our five-year plan, it's just we're keeping that as reserve in case something pops up.
Yeah, I think it would, yeah, well, we would just demarcate a little bit, so I guess it would change our unrestricted fund balance. We would say now, you know, because we've kinda restricted it with this reserve, and we have Tabor, and we have the mill and these other expenditures. So it, it would change our, our unrestricted fund balance, but it wouldn't change our average fund balance.
And CDOT would pay the million dollars over three years anyway, so a million is a lot, probably.
Right, yeah, well, I, I, I don't think that would be deal breaker for them. If we committed to reimbursing them, I think that they'd be flexible as far as when that money came.
Yeah. But what is the advantage, what is the advantage of not having it just simply sit in an unrestricted fund balance to be used for emergencies versus labeling it transportation other than cosmetics? At, at least as it sits there now, it's unrestricted. We can do anything we want with it.
That was my thought, and I was just hesitating, cause I said I liked, I liked the flexibility. Uh, but I also know that this is one of the major priorities for our community. And just like previous board put money back for Public Works building, okay, you, these are big dollar items. And we can talk the same thing about parks, or not parks, but, uh, trails or open space, you know, if there's community goals and transportation, I think is a pretty universally accepted one, I think we need, I don't think it's cosmetic, I think it's a statement that we are committed to improving our roadways.
But this. I, I do think you said the message to the community that, look, we're not even certain exactly where this money's gonna go, but we're committed to addressing traffic concerns in, in Windsor.
And it gives us the flexibility then, that if the thirty-four coalition comes up in January, February and says, we need fifty thousand dollars for a Pell study or whatever, we're ready, we know where we're gonna pull the money.
I understand Mr. Szalowski's fear though, which is if we have it labeled as such, does that legally obligate us to a certain area?
No.
You, you could still, I think that's ultimately where you were going.
Not even just legally, but does it actually create?
Or does one fund have to borrow from another, something like that?
Cosmetically, we tap into the transportation fund to do something else. And then the citizens say, whoa, see, no wonder our roads are in that shape. You took money out of the transportation.
So thinking ahead, uh, and this is selfish, cause I think transportation's really big for our community.
Yeah, yeah.
What a four or five years.
I couldn't agree more.
Yeah, I mean, we all agree. What a four or five years, you know, another board says, eh, we don't think so. You, they would have to justify why we're gonna take money away from roadway improvement. And, and maybe we would too, maybe we say, hey, there has been an emergency. So there's a good justification for moving that money.
It may be a descriptor of what the unreserved, uh, uh, unidentified funds should be for. A soft description in the policies, and you and I could bring impeachment proceedings against that darn board when they decide.
We'll be in the audience then.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, okay.
Pounding up. Anyway, I, I can go either way, obviously, but.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time, and I'll turn it over to Eric.
Okay, and Eric, I'm sorry, we're out of time.
We're all done for the night.
So where are we gonna make up that million dollars, Eric?
Eric, yeah.
Yeah, what are you, can you?
Yeah, what could we, I'll find it here in a second.
Before we get going, I had a couple, they're in the slideshow, but I added two slides, um, that aren't in your packet that was handed out.
Do you, Eric, you want me to do that? But they are, but they are in your presentation.
They're in the presentation, I just wanted, I knew you had the, the slides, you know, in your handout today, so. Good evening, Mayor and Board, um, wanted to present to you tonight for your consideration the rest of the Parks Recreation and Culture Department's budget proposal for two thousand and nineteen. Tonight we'll cover the cemetery, forestry, parks, open space and trails. Uh, before we get started, I wanna recognize Wade and Bob back here, uh, for their hard work over the past weeks and months and their staff, uh, in order to, to get us to where we're at today, uh, with the budget proposal that's before you tonight. Um, without their hard work, I definitely would, would struggle to stand before you tonight, cause they do a, a lot of the light work, um, figuring out what costs are gonna be for the future year, so wanted to recognize them right out of the gate. Um, as you saw a couple of weeks ago when I presented, uh, the recreation side, we, uh, before you tonight, everything is based upon, uh, philosophical approaches on the left-hand side. All the town's strategic goals, town's mission and vision, as well as our department's mission and vision. And then every slide is, uh, captured like on the right. So you'll see a quick highlights of what's, what has the department done for the, uh, or that division within the department, what they've done for the, uh, for the two thousand and eighteen year at, to this point. Any staffing changes that are, uh, asked for in this budget, significant changes, a quick and brief financial review, and then capital projects. And basically, that's what I just handed out, what I omitted in the original submission last Friday, two capital project slides. So that's what I wanted to pass out today, but they are included in your handout in front of you, or in the slideshow in front of you. So let's get started with cemetery. Um, year to date, we have thirty-one burials. Uh, you'll notice that nineteen are cremations. That is the second year that cremations are actually outpacing burials, so, um, be interesting to watch over the next couple of years to see whether that is not a trend and it actually is, uh, a, a true path forward in terms of managing our cemetery. Uh, cemetery's been a, a great success every year. If you've not, uh, uh, gone to our Memorial Day event, uh, I would recommend you go. Uh, staff does a great job putting it on, uh, VFW puts a great job putting it on. It is truly a, a touching tribute to our veterans, especially the guys from Windsor and, and those that are buried there. And then lastly, the reason I put Johnny as a rock star, I've had the, uh, fortune or unfortune, uh, depending on your stance of managing multiple cemeteries. I can tell you that as a Parks and Recreation Director, that is one of the things that would keep you up at night if you don't manage it well. I have not lost one ounce of sleep for an about a cemetery because of Johnny Martinez. He does his job very well, great professional, um, is, is the concierge to everybody who goes out to that cemetery. And his customer service and the fact that he knows who gets put where, uh, is critical. And I can tell you that firsthand, uh, in North Carolina, I got a call one Sunday where the wife was buried beside the wrong husband. It's not a call you wanna ever get, and I don't ever worry about that with Johnny, he is a perfection to a T, so. Um, just, just wanted to share with you that cemeteries are one of those things that can scare you, and because of him, I don't worry about it.
What? It gets scary?
It gets scary, yeah. Uh, wanted to share with you where the work is done, so Terry mentioned Cartograph, I wanted to show you, um, some examples. We've had Cartograph now for about a year and a half, implemented about midway of seventeen. So, uh, our department, like Public Works, tracks all of the work that they do, uh, in a variety of areas. And you can see here on this slide, Johnny spends about seventy percent of his time, uh, basically managing grass and turf, making that park, the cemetery, look beautiful, not only when you're in there, but from a distance. So that's his main focus. And then the rest of his time is spent on burials, uh, cleaning up headstones, other amenities in the parks. Uh, and then the, the, kind of the change for him next year is we've added the roundabout right there, uh, at the entrance. So he is going to begin taking, uh, once the warranty is up of that roundabout, he will take over the maintenance of that for the, the, the department. So that's a big, uh, piece, but I just wanna share with you kinda where he spends his time. And this shows his hours and what the tasks he, uh, works on, uh, year to date for two thousand and eighteen.
You're saying that the, he will maintain the center of?
Yes, the landscaping and the roundabout.
Well, let's bury somebody there then.
Are you talking about the roundabout that goes into Doug's Day Diner and that one that's right there?
Yes.
It feels like a street.
Well, we do, we maintain all of the.
Who does the other?
So, yeah, we, there, there's another, there's another slide that'll talk about roundabouts that are, that's within forestry and horticulture, that's coming up next.
Seventh and Crossroads, Martin's new one, I mean, they all, they maintain all of them.
Yeah, so we're, we'll be at five next year, I'll get to that just in a, in a second. Uh, but I wanted to share with you where, where Johnny's work is, is spent in cemeteries. Um, increases in cemeteries, quite honestly, the budget is almost identical to the previous year, but there are some, some increases and decreases. Uh, the increase on on-call pay, very similar to what Terry mentioned earlier in terms of being on-call for snow or on-call for parks throughout the year. Um, the, uh, there, there's been some decreases in general maintenance in terms of, we've done some large projects this year, like moving a, uh, a, a meter so that Johnny didn't have to stick a, a pole all the way down in the bottom with a flashlight on it, so he could read it from a distance and have to really get his magnifying glass out. We've actually raised that meter, so that project's not in there this year. Uh, there is increasing sprinkler repair, a lot of that is related to the project out there at the roundabout, there were lines that were cut. Uh, we spent a lot of money this year, so there'll be probably some dirt in the lines and extra, extra work this year. Um, and then some decreased contract maintenance. So that kinda gets you to this next slide. If you look on the right, uh, the increase is about six hundred and fifteen dollars. So it basically is the same budget that you approved in previous years. The only difference is there is an increase of twenty-four percent on the revenue side, and that is a three-year rolling average. Two thousand and seventeen, for whatever reason, was a popular year, and we made a little bit more money, so that skews that three-year average and why you see an increase, uh, in two thousand and nineteen.
So we're losing money at the cemetery?
Yes, you always lose money in a cemetery. It is a perpetual care forever. Uh, so you lose money in the cemetery as long as you're in that business.
Okay. Making money off people dying.
Next slide, and this one, this one, uh, is really a question for you tonight. Uh, this year, uh, and we just bid the project that you see in front of you, on the right-hand part of the screen, is the roundabout that we were just talking in the entrance into, uh, the cemetery. So we bid this project, it just came back extremely high. Uh, there was two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars budgeted, project came in at four fifty-one. It's about a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars over budget. Uh, McCully Contractors is the low bidder, low parent bidder. Uh, I've met multiple times with engineering staff, uh, determined should we push all the landscaping into next year and just do the hardscape and the irrigation, um, or should we scrap the project for this year and ask the board if we can just move the money into next year and change, obviously change the, change the budget number in the next year's capital project? Ultimately, after, uh, a, a final meeting this morning, the recommendation to you is, for a variety of reasons that I can go into, uh, is to scrap the project for this year. A lot of it has to do with weather. Uh, our fear with the weather, and if you get into any, over the next two weeks, there's lows every night below forty. Um, if we're trying to pour concrete, they'd have to cover that concrete every night. That's gonna create change orders, it's something we really don't wanna get into, uh, with this or any contractor. So we feel vehemently that we should move this project into the two thousand and nineteen, uh, budget if the board so, uh, would approve to do that. So the question before you tonight is, are you okay with us increasing the project amount and then moving it into two thousand and nineteen, and we will rebid? Uh, engineering also does feel that if we rebid in the spring, we potentially get some cheaper bids than trying to get it in before the, the winter season, and as you saw over the weekend, winter may very well be somewhat right at our door.
What, uh, what does this all include? This coming out of the roundabout and the?
So you come out of the roundabout.
Circle?
Yeah, so you cre, you create the circle drive and there's parking along the sides, here, here, here. Um, there is a sidewalk with a, kind of a landscaping feature here in the middle, um, and then landscaping around, around the edges of that. So it gives a, right now it's just a dirt parking lot, and so people just pull in, it, it's just a mismatch. If there's a large fun, uh, funeral, there is people everywhere. This gives some organization to it. Um, it also makes some improvements in from the building right in here for the hearse to back in, um, to do what they need to do there.
Okay, so there's no moving gravestones or anything like that?
No, this does not impact any, any, any graves whatsoever. And, and, um, I can't remember, Dean, you may recall or Wade, uh, when the, uh, cemetery master plan was put in, was, was completed probably three, three, four years ago, maybe. Uh, if you recall, uh, there's been so, there's been several years of work, I believe this is phase three. Uh, down the road, there's a phase four, which gets this prop, this piece over here, and then it gets into phase five and six, which is the far west side of the cemetery. So this is one year of multiple years of, uh, cemetery work. Uh, our intention was to take a year off, knowing that this project would get done this year. We were gonna skip one next year, but given the high bid and the lateness of the season, we would prefer to, to move it to next year.
Is there still an entrance off Main on this? It doesn't look like.
Yes, that, that's far to your, uh, to the west, you don't see that here. So that road kinda comes right here, where that, my cursor's at.
And you think there'd be as much parking as there is with just the bare ground?
There, there's probably.
I've been at some funerals where that entire empty field was utilized. And we're taking up a lot of space for, I don't know if that's lawn and green, and I know that's all pretty, but again, um, hopefully we're thinking really zero escaping. And I know a lot of our senior citizens, if we get a lot who have to park on that other side, I mean, they're all gonna wanna park, I mean, they need to park closer, so.
I'd rather see the whole inner oval be more diagonal parking.
So people will still park in the, in the U-shaped drive that comes, uh, in and off of Main Street. Uh, this is probably, yes, it is reduced parking, and what we can do if we wanted to, uh, we could change it and have people come over here. The, the issue we will get into at some point is all of the land, we, we will, we will begin to run out of burial spaces. So for example, one of the, the, the white portion down here where this, uh, landscaping, uh, key is for what trees and things are there, when that, in a, in a future phase, that becomes burial area. Uh, so at some point, not right this second, but if we were to make this larger parking, you will run out of space quicker to bury people. And then at some point, we get into build-out, um, and you'll have to decide whether you wanna stay in the business, i.e. buy more property and have a second cemetery, or are we done in that business?
I'm talking about keeping the directional flow, but having parking.
Can't we have parking more within that oval, instead of so much of it just being used for?
We, we can definitely have engineering re-look at it and bring it back to you, that, that is not an issue. I think that's, that, they'd be happy to look at that over the winter and come back with a revised plan if you wanted them to look to try to maximize parks.
Are there headstones in that oval?
There are not. There are not. One, one thing that staff's thought of, and this is just conceptual, is, you know, does this become a, a future, uh, veterans memorial in a, in addition to what we already have, an additional area? So more of a, um, a garden for somebody to go and, uh, and sit and reflect.
How many parking spots does this plan reflect right now? How, how many parking, how many vehicles can we park there right now?
Twenty to twenty-five.
Twenty to twenty-five?
Gotta hand it to you, if you can see that legend.
Yeah, I can't read that.
It's like thirty-five in the, in the diagonal pieces, and then if my memory serves me right, um, in these stretches here, not in the bends, you can, there's enough room for cars to park there. So you're probably talking, I'm just guessing here, sixty? Which, to Mayor's point, it, it is decreased parking.
It is.
Uh, but again, when you go back to the original master plan, ultimately, uh, we, I think the plan was to try to maximize burial space over the span of the entire.
But, but we also are seeing that our burials are, are decreasing.
Correct.
And more of the cremation, so, again, we may not run out of space if more folks are moving in that direction. And I think one of the plans we saw way early on, probably only miles, don't you remember in the corner, wasn't there some kind of a, in that corner, there was supposed to be like a quiet space or something built, whatever happened to that con, I mean, I remember.
That was when they had the whole west side all designed for build-out and.
Yeah, but it was in that north, and you remember that? And there was supposed to be, that was supposed to be where the veterans' tribute was, was in that corner. Now that was.
So if, if the board would like, I'd be more than happy to, uh, share with you. So if the, if the board would like, I'd be more than happy to, uh, share with you their, their current plan, so you see all of the different phases and what it would look like at build-out. Uh, but I guess for tonight, what I'd love to, to know, or at least before the, before we finalize budget, uh, if, if you're good with us not doing this project right now this year and then considering with some more information in terms of what the cemetery looks like, if you want engineering to go back and look at parking and ways to maximize. Um, know that we would like to do something next year to get a piece of this done, because, you know, you pull in off of here and it is just dirt. And then this area over in here, uh, we don't have irrigation to anymore. That's all been cut off, um, because of the roundabout project, uh, when they, when they came into here. So the goal is to make this look much nicer than just a dirt lot, um, given the beauty of the, of the cemetery park as it is today.
I think it makes a lot of sense to postpone it. Question would be, would you start the bid process fresh in the spring?
Yes, we would start this. We, I would go back to engineering as soon as you've said, we can move whatever portion or all of this.
We need to revisit some of the plans.
Into the next year.
The design itself.
Did we ever work out the, the issue we had where with the?
With the funeral home director?
Well, no, the, we, we.
The bathroom?
The bathroom, we got some money to move that. We were maybe going to have to pay that back because of.
I'm still trying to talk to the, to the state in regards to the Land Water Conservation Trust fund. Yes, so we, we have not solved that problem.
And we haven't had to give back the funds yet.
We have not.
But that still potentially could happen.
And I don't believe there's any, uh, we're, we're still working on it.
Okay.
I'm o- I'm okay killing it for this year.
Me too.
Sounds like we're not even in agreement on the design.
What, the project?
Eric, will Johnny be, um, managing all this landscape once it is done?
Yes.
I have got to, uh, be with him for the bike and walk day, so I just, yeah, so I, I would concur with everything that you said about him. He's, he's a great advocate for, uh, for Windsor.
What about the stretch along three ninety-two, just the shoulder? Is that maintained by the?
That is maintained by us. Um, know that between the sidewalk and the road, when we, um, did that phase last year, the portion between the sidewalk and the road was not irrigated.
Okay.
So that is why it looks a little unsightly.
Cause the cemetery looked nice, and then you had this kind of.
Correct. So it is a struggle to keep that somewhat polished, um, so that until we get into the next phase, so not this phase, the phase beyond, goes back and puts irrigation there. That was a cut that was made during that piece of the project, the project phase, so that's why that kind of looks a little unsightly.
Well, don't we got some extra landscaping stuff? Maybe instead of putting grass in there, should just fill that in with some?
Problem is it, it, it goes right out onto the road because of the snow.
I'd like to be buried under home plate, just so everybody.
I was going to go to the field with a target in the back of my headstone.
So, um, moving on to forestry. So I, I, again, here, I would like to, you know, I'm sure everybody understands the word forestry in terms of management of all our trees in our urban forest, but it also includes, uh, our Horticulture Division, uh, all of the flowers, uh, along Main Street and downtown, uh, the pots that are outside of this building, Rec Center, uh, those kind of things. So they spend a lot of their time managing our trees and urban forests, as well as the beds in our parks and various places out, uh, around town. Projects, uh, so we, we'll, we'll go over those in a second, but they did a lot of projects this year. Renovation of Eastman Park beds, renovation of the Recreation Center beds, and renovation of the south side of the Police Department's beds. Uh, Eastman Park will finish up here shortly, but again, lots of, lots and lots of projects there. Uh, and then Arbor Day obviously is a big, uh, to-do every year. Uh, this board recognizes the winners of the Arbor Day contest, and this year we were recognized as Tree City USA, uh, for the thirty-seventh year. Uh, so kudos to the, the board for continuing to support our tree effort there. Um, and then they also manage, uh, a little bit in retard, in, in regards to, uh, the volunteers at Treasure Island. You may recall that Treasure Island Garden just recently won, uh, an award for the demonstration garden to be the best, one of the best demonstration gardens in seven states around, including Colorado. So, uh, a, a, another successful year for the Forestry Division. Um, wanted to share with you, and this again is another cartograph, but Blake McGrew spends a lot of time, uh, he's the guy in the bucket truck. He's the person you see trimming all the trees. As you can see, uh, on this slide, he trimmed almost two hundred and forty trees this year. Uh, the slide on the right, and if you ever want to see the details, we can get you zoomed in, but that's a cartograph screenshot that shows every single tree that he touched this year. Uh, so six hundred and forty of them on the right-hand side. Our trees, our entire town is, uh, gritted out into a six-year, uh, block. So the, if this was year one, next year, we already know what year two looks like. Um, and I'll give you an example. Those would be Pooter Heights, Eastman, around the Eastman Park area, Dog Park, Governor's Farm, Locust, Oak, Chestnut. We'll probably do another six hundred and fifty trees in year two, uh, in that cycle. And then, and so again, it's a six-year cycle, so you'll see every year a glimpse or a screenshot that looks very similar to this. Uh, that would be a normal work year for Blake. And then on top of that is trees that he, that he may get in our, in our park system. So, uh, again, kudos to him for his hard work that he does.
Eric, what's that?
Yes, sir.
What was the, why was there so much done in Rich West?
Uh, it's just on the cycle that of, of trees areas, tree areas.
You kind of hit that neighborhood and might add another one next year?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
On the forestry budget, um, we have twenty-four thousand, six hundred for contract services. What is that for? Last couple of years, it's been zero.
So I'll get to that in a second, but we removed, we, we moved a lot of contracts that we had in different areas.
Okay.
So for, I'll give you an example. Um, we may have had, uh, under land maintenance, a contract to spray the trees in Main Park for elm scale. And it's, and it was difficult to understand, well, we did, it was over here, did we do it or did we not? And so, but with Bob's, uh, leadership, we, we've taken anything that said contract and put it in one line. It says contract services.
Just why I knew it's because.
No, it's just movement of from, it was over here and we moved it down.
Better tracking.
So we, so we can understand as a staff, we said we had these five contracts, and we look in one spot as opposed to, well, it was over here and over there. It's a little easier for us to coordinate. Uh, clicked the wrong mouse. So urban foresters, so this is Ken Cowan-Mori. You can kind of see where his work is done every year. Um, he, he is spending about a quarter percent of his time in code enforcement, so dealing with things that Jeremiah may send in for the Police Department, your gov requests. And then as we've recently talked, and you'll see, uh, in November in terms of changing the, uh, the, the on, over and above language in our ordinance and for trees and shrubs. Uh, that's a lot of what he is doing, responding to them, trying to interact with the homeowner. Uh, and so he will do, I'm sure, more of that next year as we begin to roll out that education, assuming that the board approves that ordinance change later this year. Um, your gov's requests are up here as well in emails exchanged. So those are when citizens, as you know, call in and say, you know, uh, and maybe Paul's, Paul's neighborhood, there's a, there's an issue with somebody's tree hanging over the, over a sidewalk. Uh, that's how we find out a lot of times from, from citizens. So that kind of gives you a, a cartographic look of what Ken does. Uh, then Horticulture, same thing. You can see where their time is spent. I already mentioned, uh, they, uh, the projects, but they spent thirty-six percent of their time this year working on just those three projects. So again, lots of, lots of time in, in, in detail work there, so that, that is where Horticulture spends their time. And then last, we had said I'd come back to the right-ofways, uh, and, and roundabout maintenance. So you can see where we spent the money this year. The, these are these two charts in terms of equipment and labor costs and hours spent, um, in dollars. We're projecting it to go up this ye- the following year because, uh, next week, the Seventh and Crossroads Roundabout will be finished. We'll get in, it takes about seven days, so they'll begin to work and finish it, and then the roundabout there and Crossroads entering Rain Dance, and that entire strip of, uh, uh, right-ofway there is ours to maintain when the warranty's up, which happens early next year. So we already maintained the three roundabouts along Eastman Park. We're picking up the one at Seventh and Crossroads. We're also picking up the one, uh, up by Rain Dance already in, in, in two thousand and nineteen, and then in the very near future, we will probably pick up ones over off of County Road Five, uh, as well as the medians up at, uh, Harmony Ridge. So, um, I expect this to be a growth area in terms of workload for, uh, the Horticulture staff. Um, and I, and I forgot to mention, uh, the, the one right outside of the cemetery. So we have three roundabouts now. We're picking up three more, knowing that two of them, the ones up on the hill, are exponentially larger. The one at Rain Dance is at least double any one that we have now. So while it's, while it's one in terms of the word roundabout, it's almost really two roundabouts. So that's why you see the increase in, in time spent, and I expect that number to continue to climb as we add roundabouts, uh, and, and other right-ofways that we may need to maintain like Harmony Ridge. Yes, sir.
We're still under the forestry heading though, aren't we?
Yes.
Um, merit, merit pay is a part of this? Zero budgeted for fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. In two thousand and eighteen, forty-five hundreds budgeted, projected zero for this year, but then next year, it's darn near double.
So, uh, wait, this came up last time too. So remember, we, we budget the merit pay. It's budgeted every year. Then i- is people get their, you know, as they get their evals and it goes in, it actually works into their wages, so we don't show it as an actual expense that gets pulled into the wages. And then this year's, uh, merit also has both the merit and the wage study, so it, it is more, it should be double what was budgeted last year, cause instead of being three percent, it's seven percent. So, so that's why, so that's why every year we don't actually show that expenditure, cause whatever people actually receive for their evals, it goes into their wages and that's reflected in the wages.
Okay. Eric, in regard, go ahead.
Yep. Um, the, uh, Pooter Tech Metro District is, is kind of conducted an inventory of all the trees in Water Valley, identifying ash, and have really sort of said, okay, well, they're all going to die. Um, let's not try to replace them all at once three, four years from now. So they're trying to do a phased, uh, removal and replacement. Do we have issues similar to that? Do we have a lot of ash?
We have about, we have about forty-five hundred trees in our urban forest, total, all trees.
Yeah.
About five hundred of them, of them are ash trees. We have chosen to, at this point, uh, not do anything in terms of what you're talking about, like removing maybe ten, ten this year, so that we don't have to remove five hundred all at once, if and when the Emerald Dashboard gets here. But we are monitoring it, so the closer, i- if it makes its way north, much closer than, I think if it gets to Longmont, uh, and Wade, if you correct me if I'm wrong. Think if it gets to Longmont, we will become more aggressive than what other communities and maybe metro districts are being. Right now, we've taken the wait-and-see.
Yeah.
Um, in terms of, should we really remove them if it's not right on our doorstep? Uh, I think the big expense for us is going, isn't necessar- it's going to be a big expense for the town, but the bigger expenses, there's about fifteen hundred trees that are private. So that are private, sitting in a, in a homeowner's yard. Uh, so those are the ones, I think homeowners, i- if it gets here, uh, the homeowners will incur a lot of expense in removing those. But to answer your question, we, we are taking a wait-and-see approach. We're not proactively removing. What we are doing is proactively planting some shadow trees. So if we've got some trees that are ash trees, we're planting a tree now that's nearby it, so if we need to take that ash tree down, we're, maybe that tree's fifteen, fifteen feet tall as opposed to a six or eight foot tree. So we're, we're doing some, but we're not in a mitigation stage yet. Like you, like it sounds like maybe the metro district is beginning to, to look.
Yeah, and one of the, one of the thoughts on it was, if you wait, you and everyone else will be going to every nursery within a hundred miles trying to find trees.
Some other tree.
Right, but it sounds like you're doing that with the shadow trees.
We're doing some of that with shadow trees, but it, it's, it, it is something that we talk about annually with our tree board. Um, they, they want us to be more aggressive. Uh, we've chosen not to be that aggressive, uh, knowing that, you know, while the five hundred trees sounds like a lot, it's not the amount of trees that, uh, Fort Collins or Greeley or other large municipalities that have a lot more ash trees are facing. And, and I've, I've seen it firsthand in Kansas City, where they literally went in, the city went in and just wiped out entire neighborhoods when, when the Emerald Dashboard got there. So we, we are something that's very, very much on our radar.
Okay, so just to follow up on that, I, I brought it up before. We're not going to put anything in the capital improvement plan like three years from now that says.
We are not, we are not. I, I talked to Shane after that last work session when that question came up. Uh, I think my recommendation to him is to continue to take the wait-and-see. If it creeps much farther north, then I think we have to, to change our tact.
Okay, it's kind of like that transportation reserve we talked about. We just know we got to spend it. We just haven't allocated.
Right.
Also on the on-over-above policy?
Yes.
Are we, is there anything about maybe a scholarship fund or helps with?
That is coming up.
All right, forget that. The roundabout.
Yes.
Do we, um, elect to maintain these? I know with the Rain Dance, when it seemed like that was part of our negotiations, why do we need to already plan for the ones on County Road Five?
Um, we, we do not. If you remember that conversation, I was opposed to taking over the Rain Dance one.
Correct.
Uh, given that we've taken that tact and, and we're going to do that, uh, we already do three. The one at the top of the hills, ours already. Um, we, we kind of began to take, to shift our, our, our thinking to take any of them that are in the public right-ofway, uh, that we would maintain, like the County Road Five. For example, the Tarmigan has a roundabout inside their subdivision. I think Harmony Ridge also is going to have, I'm pointing to you because you live there. I think Harmony Ridge has one internal to their subdivision. Those are on that.
Makes sense.
Uh, HOA or, or Metro District, both. So we've, we've said we would go ahead and do the ones that are in the public right-ofway.
So since the board elected to take on the Rain Dance one, your expectation is that's going to happen for everyone?
Pretty much, yes. So, and, and, um, I think that as that slide changes, uh, at some point, those roundabouts will probably, we need to be discussing, should we be contracting that work out, or will we need additional personnel? And, and I don't know that that's imminent, but, you know, we're going to go to six. At what point is it, we, the tipping of the scale to say, is it worth our time and our effort on the staff's in-house side? Or do we need to contract that out?
And that's more forestry than parks?
Yes. It's, it's really the Horticulture, and obviously, but, but we all, they all help.
Because it's more detailed than just.
It's a little more detailed. It's dealing with the flowers and trimming of bushes and trees and that kind of stuff. Uh, summa, summary of the changes, so I think this first bullet at the top goes to your question, uh, that we added an additional ten thousand dollars, uh, for that right-ofway trees, shrubs. I don't know whether at this point we're going to call it a scholarship, or we're going to call it some kind of homeowner assistance or what, but I think it goes back to that conversation. Uh, I think we will all decide that in November. Uh, but we're, we're earmarking ten thousand dollars, uh, in the budget for assistance, uh, for, for folks who maybe can't afford to remove a tree or, or a bush or something that, that's over, in on over and above. So that, that directly answers, I hope, hopefully answers your question and concern that we had talked about. Uh, again, uh, increase in right, the roundabout work, a couple of projects, the boardwalk beds will get renovated, and mainly that is the one, uh, the round, kind of the circle drive there in front of the farmer's market structure. Uh, I believe when you talked to the DDA, they intended on adding, uh, money in for, I think it was Sixth Street, maybe it was a different street, but that intersection, they were talking about adding money to, uh, expand the, uh, the kind of the aesthetics and plantings along, uh, Sixth Street, the four corners there. Uh, so what I told, uh, Matt Ashby was, uh, if they provide the money, we would either do it in-house or contract it out and manage that contract. But then ultimately, that's going to be another four beds for us to maintain as that grows. Uh, and to go back to your question earlier, Miles, on the roundabout, I think at some point, we probably ought, all, we will also be in the same conversation in terms of management of the downtown corridor, is that, as that grows, as they, as, as we look for more vibrant downtown, is that in-house, is the contract, is it shared cost between the town and the DDA? Those are things I think we're going to have to think about in the future as, as we grow. I don't think it's an issue for, for nineteen, but as every intersection gets four more beds, um, you know, it's going to be more work, uh, on, on staff, and so on.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the, the roundabout. If we just assume we're going to maintain them, I, you can really see this kind of exploding in our, our costs, so is that something we should approve every time one comes?
Yeah, and you would. I mean, I, I don't know that we're giving up the board's ability to say yes or no, but I would, I would say if, if we've historically said, yeah, sure, we'll take these over, we'll take these over, uh, it's going to be harder and harder to tell the next developer, no, we're not doing that anymore, if they can point to others that we've done. So from staff's, uh, standpoint, I think just kind of being risk averse is we're going to budget for it because. So, yeah, I think that the board, we still, as part of the negotiations, could ultimately say, no, we're not. So, yeah, I think that the board would still, as part of the negotiations, could ultimately say, no, we're not gonna take on anymore, but, you know, is, I, I just think from the development community standpoint, is, when we draw that line, if it's gonna look like we're being, you know, treating them all the same.
Yeah, cause we talked about beautifying the entrances to our communities and not just the right, the roundabout, but even if it's a median instead of a roundabout. So I'm wondering about certain ones that kind of pop up in not so strategic locations, maybe they're, they go back to the development.
But if it's not in our gateway plan?
Yeah. I mean, Rain Dance, I think it was kind of strategic that we would take that over because it was close to an entrance to our community.
It was a gateway.
It was a gateway.
Major corridor.
Yeah.
Right.
All right, as long as there's flexibility for it.
Uh, then kind of a quick summary of financials. There is a decrease, uh, on the revenue side, it's due to us not hosting a local tournament, not tournament, local conference, as well as reflecting actual tree sales, uh, in the past, we've budgeted for about a hundred, we haven't really sold a hundred, uh, so we dropped that down. Um, then on expenditure side, you see a ten percent increase, it really is not thirty-seven thousand dollars. That, that increase is based upon, uh, next year's recommended budget over our actuals. Uh, it's really only about ten thousand dollar, ten thousand dollars more than what you budgeted and approved in two thousand and eighteen. And that really is the tree mitigation, a little increase in roundabouts and increases in contract services. But again, the contract services were really moving from different line items all into one, and then there's just some small increases in terms of, uh, the cost of service. Any questions on forestry?
What did you mean on the slide before that said move contracted work to contract services?
So there were, so there, as I was saying, there's a variety of contracts, though, it might be spraying, or, uh, removal of large trees that we don't have the ability to. Though, they were in a variety of different line items within the forestry budget, and it was confusing to staff. So we said, let's take all of those and make a new line item called contract services and plug them all in. So that, if they looked at anything that was contracted, they only had to look in that one line. To see, I have five contracts to manage, I didn't have to find them in the variety of line items within their budget. So Parks highlights, the big one here really for me is transition. You probably recall that we, you approved in last year's budget, uh, to break out open space and trails, Wade became that manager. And then we hired Bob in late February, uh, he came on, and kudos to Bob and Wade. They made the transition very easy, uh, in terms of passing out, passing down knowledge from Wade to Bob in terms of our internal system. So I really wanna, uh, you know, say thank you to both of them for working through, uh, the past eight months of transition. Uh, I think Bob now has got a firm, firm grasp on, on Windsor. And he's obviously made some changes throughout the year, and anytime you had changes, you had bumps in the road. We had staff that decided that the grass was greener on the other side, uh, whether that be another department or another department outside of the town. But I can tell you, by the end of the year, or where we're at this year, uh, our park system looks the best, in my opinion, that I've seen in three years. And we have a team that has really begun to gel, um, really proud to work with them every day. Kudos to Bob and, and Wade, everything that they've brought, uh, to kind of change our system on. You will see in the next few slides, tons of work spent on maintenance in our parks and why they look that good. Lots of projects this year, a lot of them, the public doesn't even see, the devil in the details, the work, the work on our irrigation system. Doing a better job picking up trash, doing a better job maintaining our beds in our parks, uh, those kind of things. And then I'd be remiss, if I didn't tell you, and I know, I think you just recently got, um, information on, that you'd asked for on our special events from the last budget discussion, parks spends a lot of time, uh, helping with special events, whether that be picking up the trash after a, a five K, or working for weeks, getting everything ready for Harvest Festival, and then working their butts off for, for three days at the Harvest Festival. When you have a summer concert series on a Thursday night, and there's three thousand people in the park, the next day, they're the ones out there making the grass not look flat and stand back up erect. So, you know, we, we put a lot of, lot of pressure on a boardwalk park, for example, and they spend the next five or six days getting it back to looking beautiful for the next event, or the next pe- patron that shows up in our park. So kind of show you, you know, our parks are broken into community parks and neighborhood parks, you can see here where their work is spent. Forty-one percent of their time is spent on turf maintenance, and then forty percent is spent on trash and restrooms. The rest is on projects and special events. In community parks, we mow the grass. Uh, you'll see the difference here in the neighborhood parks. We decided, uh, in previous years, we were using, uh, summer help to mow, and we had a, a summer help mow crew. But the problem was, we did, we, and we still have the same problem. You get college kids typically after school's out, and then they go back to school in early September. So we found that staff was spending a lot of time on the, what we call the shoulder seasons, mowing, and they couldn't do the detailed work. So we decided early on last year to contract out the mowing of the neighborhood parks, and it worked out beautifully. And the rea- the reason I say that is, and why our neighborhood parks look better than they did in previous years, is the devil in the details. When you look at the slide, there is no grass mowing, but they spend a lot more time picking up debris and trash. They spend a lot more time in bed maintenance, they spend a lot more time dealing with irrigation and vandalism, and it's gone faster than it was in the past. So, uh, I think the shift, uh, that, that the team made, and where, where we spend our effort and what we contract out was, was a good decision. And you'll see that reflected to continue in, in the next year's budget.
Eric?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, the pie charts are a little deceptive, I guess, cause obviously they're broken down by percentage of time spent.
Yes.
So they all look like a hundred percent, the twos look like a hundred percent, but, but obviously, community parks are gonna require a lot more labor, right?
Yes, a- a- and I just chose to show you the percentage of not labor hours or dollars spent, but we, we have all of that information.
Sure, I mean, off the top of your head, what would you say is the labor hours, community versus neighborhood?
Community versus neighborhood, I don't know. I don't know, how about I get you that answer, like, that's a, that's a.
I'll wait up, I'll be up tonight.
That is a computer question.
Right, I know, the number's there.
We will get you that.
And there's no revenue in parks, right?
Uh, there is a little bit, I'll show you that in a second. Not a lot, in comparison to the expense.
You said it out loud.
We, we should have that motto in Latin, right?
Let's go back to the cemetery.
So summary of changes, uh, and I just pulled out some of the, some of the big ones, I didn't worry about the small. Custodial supplies is a change here, uh, it's interesting, but we, we've never, uh, actually budgeted for toilet paper and those kind of products, that we just went and got it from Pella Works and the facilities team. So with the change in who's operating what, uh, we remove, we won't be going and getting supplies from them, which will reduce their budget, but it increased ours in terms of, uh, now we're, we're budgeting for toilet paper and soap and paper towels and those kind of things in our, in our public parks. Playground repairs is up about three grand, uh, and then contracts. We've talked about previously the strategic plan, so this is the earmark that you see on the, on the park side, we already had one in the rec side. Uh, and then mowing of neighborhood parks, uh, the reason that's plus fifty-two hundred is we are adding two parks, so we will build Village East Park, uh, this spring, it's out to, uh, out to bid right now. So once the, the sod can be down, we will manage that park, as well as Windshear, barring, uh, them coming with a weather concern, that park should also be done by Christmas, meaning we will get that park next year as well. So they're both neighborhood parks, so you'll see an, an increase of fifty-two eighty.
Well, and even with Windshear, if that did happen, they'd be putting it in in March, we'd still have it next year, so.
At some point, we're gonna have it, whether this winter or spring. Financial review, you can see on the left, uh, your question, uh, on revenues, uh, it's up about nineteen thousand. And the reason there is we've moved, uh, field rentals over to, uh, parks away from the recreation budget. Because whenever people are renting the, the sports field, then that's where the, the revenue should go. The rest of that money is for shelter rentals, such as pavilions for birthday parties. We had, we had a rental for the Australian Water Dog, whatever show at, at the beach, uh, those kind of things. So, you know, that's, that's where those happen.
I like my water dog.
You like your water dog. Expenditures on the right-hand side, you see a large increase in terms of percentage, but it really is, um, a little less than that. It's really about twenty percent. The difference is shifting of personnel, we moved personnel that were in the rec, general fund rec budget, that are in parks. They're really parks workers, but they're over here, we moved them into the parks budget where they should be. Um, as well as we took the, uh, expense of park, uh, sports field maintenance, which was also in the general fund rec, and put it in parks, uh, so I can give you those numbers.
So then we should have seen a decrease in the other ones, is that correct?
You saw a little bit of a decrease there, but you probably also see some shifting. Again, we, if you remember when we met the first time, across the board, we've, we've moved people to where they're supposed to be, their, their costs should be getting charged, so that's a lot of the shifting of personnel. That's why that number looks a lot higher, but it really is about a twenty percent increase in terms of expenses.
Looking for the revenue.
The revenue is at the.
No, I, I see the forty-one oh nine, but I don't see it on.
It's on page A two, on the second mine down.
Okay, thank you, Dean. I mean, the biggest jump is the personnel.
Yes.
So that's all the transferring, transferring in, uh.
It's, it's, it's allocating the people that were already in the budget to the right one, and then taking people who were in the rec fund, general fund. So it's still, the money's still coming out of general fund, but it's moving from recreation to parks where they're doing their work.
Are there new heads?
I'm sorry.
New heads?
No.
I have a question, might be for Dean. On page A twenty-three, line five one three three, employee ma- employee retirement.
Five one three three?
Is that Eric's?
Okay, yes.
It just looks like such a large increase.
That can't be the wage study that's gonna make people retire in one year, they're.
But it might, depending what this.
Goes from twelve thousand to a hundred and nine thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to check that one.
Yep, Biggie, are you looking at that? That definitely looks like a typo there. Um, it's five one thirty-three employee retirement. Large margin, projected eighteen to twelve, up to a hundred and nine thousand. I don't think we've shifted that many staff, I mean. Yeah. That's still, yeah, okay, thank you.
That extra hundred thousand doesn't need to go into another, we can reabsorb that, it doesn't need to go back into other things.
That one's for me.
We'll gladly put that back to.
Let's go on.
Cover the expenditures versus the revenue.
I have one more question. On the, uh, without Diamond Valley, are you seeing a big cost savings of the maintenance out there?
No, we will not see that in two thousand and nineteen, we will see that in two thousand and twenty. The only cost that we're seeing is on the concessions at Diamond Valley. Cause they, they are taking concessions over when it comes to the maintenance of the, of the site, it's ours for nineteen.
One more year maintenance, yes.
So then, the other slide that I passed out tonight was.
So we're losing revenue and maintaining the cost.
Well, uh, for concessions, I think that's.
Pretty even on concessions?
Well, concessions is a wash. I, I wouldn't call that, I, I would call that a game for us. On the, on the, we'll, we will still run tournaments, so we should still see a similar revenue this year. Uh, I will tell you that staff is meeting November fourth to begin our discussion internally in terms of whether we want to stay in the tournament business or not. Uh, I don't know that answer, but, uh, but we're gonna begin to do the math, uh, and analyze whether it's, it's, it's worth our time and effort for that.
Especially, yeah, if we have a, a, kind of a for-profit operation that wants to do the tournaments, they're in the site. Should we do them still, you know, should we kind of beg off, so.
Makes sense.
Yep.
Yeah, that, that is a decision for, for the twenty twenty budget, uh, but we're beginning that discussion now because, uh, I fully expect to need to begin to work on budget, you know, for, late first quarter of next year.
Yeah, but don't worry first, I'm on preliminary twenty twenties, I'm tired of waiting for it, let's keep going.
We're already working.
Yep.
Uh, so in front of you is the capital project for parks, uh, so that is the Parks Maintenance Facility Museum Collection. That's the budget that's in the CIP, we've talked about in the past, but I wanted to give you an update tonight to where Shane, Terry, and myself are at. We recently hired Wember, uh, as our owner's rep, we hired, uh, Infusion, almost said the other name. Infusion, uh, architect, and then we're in the process, uh.
And Infusion did the last project.
That's right, thank you, they, they did this project for you, the Public Works site. And then we are interviewing two more firms, we interviewed a firm today, two more firms tomorrow morning. I fully expect that next week, we will begin to sit down and do a design charrette, uh, and try to determine exactly what we need to build on the park side, exactly what, what and where the, uh, museum collections facility goes and how that may work out, as well as meeting with Terry and his staff and determining what things, uh, that they need, maybe they weren't able to fit in the last budget for whatever reason. Uh, one of the items that we, we were aware of for sure is larger, larger bay doors, uh, those kind of things. So we are really looking at this as a Parkston Pella Works campus, uh, and, and our goal here is, knowing that we, this budget, if you recall, is the money that was earmarked, um, for, for the site out at Diamond Valley. So we are working very diligently to make sure that we stay well under that number, and, and hopefully that is significant savings to the town. But we're, we'll have all the, all the team members, um, selected by the end of day tomorrow, and then I expect fully to be in the next weekend, design charrettes, and, uh, some of the schedules, we're already seeing, uh, some construction beginning in early, early, early summer, late spring of next year, so, uh, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I, I would just add that, um, you know, one of the opportunities we're gonna talk to this team about is, um, looking at other growth points. For example, you know, you know, at Town Hall, we are completely built out, I mean, we, we, we really don't have any more space left. So I've talked to Dean a little bit and Corinne about the possibility of maybe moving IT into this new space, just programming another twenty-five hundred, three thousand square feet into this facility, because IT can be anywhere. You know, these folks are mobile, a lot of time anyway, going to different buildings, working on things, so, um, we're, we're gonna look at it like that as an opportunity to possibly move them out there, if we can do it in this budget, uh, because then all of a sudden, we gain a lot of space downstairs, and we actually have a little bit of room in this building. So, so while we're doing this, we're gonna, you know, make sure that we're trying to do more than one thing. You know, I don't wanna just address parks still, I wanna address also some concerns from Public Works, make sure that they have the facility they can work in. And also, if we can kind of address this facility and, and some spacing needs here, uh, to me, that's just another win. So we're, we're, we're considering that, we're taking a look at that, we just wanna, I just wanna spend, spend smart money. I don't wanna come into the board every year and say, hey, look, now we have another facility, and it's just, um, I think with the PD and their growing pains, we're gonna have this conversation again too soon anyway, so I'm trying to minimize that, and at least not give, uh, uh, too many of these headaches to the board. So, we, any questions?
Yeah, even if you don't add that extra three thousand, at least if you made it scalable, where it's designed that way with the land, I mean.
We, we've definitely talked about the scalability, um, you know, I think every, everybody we've interviewed knows that we're growing by three hundred seventy-one people per month, I mean, every firm knows that, every firm knows that, um, we wanna make sure that, that whatever we build, we know, next time we need to build it, it's gonna be on the north side, we're gonna go this direction, you know, that we've got our utilities, we've got our HVAC and electric, and we've done everything smartly, so if we don't, um, do it now, at least we'll know where we're gonna go and.
You'll design it for that.
Yes, sir.
And build to something smaller.
That, that's right, but, but I do think, um, it, it is, it's feasible right now to think that we could put, uh, a department like an IT out there. Cause again, they're, they're so mobile, they can, half the time, they're on the road working anyway, so it doesn't, their physical location isn't, uh, Town Hall specific. When you compare that to like, uh, building permits, it's pretty Town Hall specific for, for that function to happen here. City Clerk, it's a Town Hall specific function, um, so we're, I'm, I'm looking at like the biggest function we have here that doesn't really have to be Town Hall specific, which is IT. So, and there, there's a couple of other functions that, that may, uh, in the future, would probably get kicked out before other folks.
Can you remind me where, as we're looking at this, where the, the structure's gonna go?
So, we are, when we talked, uh, originally, we talked about putting it away in the back back here, and almost building separate administrative buildings, separate everything. When Shane and Terry and I got together, we began to talk about, is there a better way to do this? And so what we've been proposing to, uh, And so what we've been proposing to, uh, every firm that we've interviewed uh, is different locations in terms of where we'd like things to go. And I'll, I'll share that with you, but at the same time, you know, that in the next, next week when we begin that design charrette, I think that's where we really sit down and have the hard talk of what, about what goes where. What we've talked about is, and this picture's a little funny, cause I squeezed it and I put it on the screen. So things are spread out much more than what it really looks like on that screen. But we talked about adding on to the north of this building and coming out here with an L and adding on the administration side so that we don't have to build more restaurants, we don't have to build another, uh, meeting room. Uh, we have one public facing entrance. Uh, so that's something that we've been considering. Taking one of these two non-heated buildings and converting that into the museum collections facility. So those buildings are, I think, Terry, just slightly under five thousand square feet. So that was, that's ballpark close what we were looking to build anyway. Uh, the building's already there. What that would mean though is Public Works loses whatever equipment is in there. We've also talked about building, uh, Parks Maintenance Shops and making up for the lost storage here, potentially going along this side here, kinda going on the south side of the property, going west. Uh, but that's a great example of where if Public Works needs three bay doors that need to be twenty feet high instead of ten, I know we need one for the bucket truck. So maybe we build a building that has four or five bays with large doors. Public Works can move their stuff into those and we can move ours into the ones that they aren't functional for them. So that's the discussion we, we've had as we've gone through all the interviews to this point, knowing that next week, I've already spoke to my team, I'm sure Terry's spoken to his. Next, next week is really, let's sit down and have that, that crucial conversation about what goes where and how do we make this work as a united campus.
Good shit. Is there already fiber running out?
There is.
All those utilities are there.
It was actually the, I think, the big bore that we did, uh, that really drove the cost when we had to go under the railroad tracks, um, where we ended up hand digging that or, um, hand mining it. Hand mining, uh, I think that was for the fiber line. So yes, it's, it's totally wired.
But you're not moving servers, right?
No, no, this would just be staff. I mean, they, they, they would have equipment, but, um, I, I think this campus would work for I T. And again, we're just kind of preliminary, I'm just trying to, I don't wanna go through all this and address Parks needs and Public Works and then say, well geez, what are we doing in Town Hall next year? Cause we're, you know, so this is just, um, eh, eh, right now, I would say, an opportunity that we're gonna look at. Then no decision's been made, I just wanna make sure that we vetted this opportunity to see, ca- can we kill more than one bird with a stone here?
Sounds like an expensive group to move because of the hardware, if you're taking.
Yeah, um, I, I don't think necessarily, so again, you know, we'd like, we have the, we have the servers here. I'm starting the budget to put backup servers in Police Department. That part of the plan wouldn't change, so tho- those things are already there. So this is more the people and the space.
So that gets us to open space and trails. Uh, again, as I mentioned earlier, transition year, not only for, for Bob coming in, but Wade, in a way, moving out of the parks duties. Uh, he spent a lot of time this summer helping, uh, create that. Uh, but at the same time, got a lot of work done, uh, significant construction. You know, we probably saved a half a million dollars by the decision to spend seventy-five thousand along the Pooter Trail where it was, the, the river was about to, uh, take the trail in. Uh, so that's, that's this area right over in here. Uh, Wade also did some repair work, uh, in a variety of different areas on different trails within town. Uh, and also has been a key, key player, uh, in, in the outreach with the Pooter Trail Group and the project that's going on right now that'll finish up in, in mid, uh, mid-November. And then the other piece is outreach. Uh, Wade's done Bike the Work Day, uh, Bike and Walk the School Day. He writ- he came up with the idea and it was very successful for a first year of, uh, leading bike rides from different parts of neighborhoods, uh, to concerts and movies in the park. Uh, so kudos to him for not only the transition, but, uh, to begin to get that ball rolling on open space and trails and the new effort that we have. Um, and then so you all know, and I had to write them all down, cause Wade, Wade, on the outreach side, also represents this board, staff and the town overall, a variety of different groups. Um, so he's part of the NOCO Bike and Pet Collaborative for the North, North Front Range, MPO, Pooter Heritage Alliance, Coalition for the Lower Pooter River Watershed, Pooter Runs Through It, the Pooter Trail that I mentioned, and also goes to the Great Western Trail Meeting. So he, he is, he is our eyes and ears on the ground and out in the community. So we understand what's going on, uh, when it comes to the Pooter River and the trail system, not only, uh, in, in and throughout Windsor, but surrounding communities as well. So, uh, he spends a lot of his time there. Wanted to share with you some, some data, as you know, we have eco counters, uh, very interesting information. So at Boardwalk Park, hundred and two thousand users this year so far to date. Uh, seventy-seven percent of those are pedestrians. We are on target, so we had a hundred and ten thousand, I'm sorry, a hundred and sixteen thousand in two thousand and seventeen. We're already at a hundred and two, and this was a statistic from last, last week that I pulled. So we are on target to probably see about a nine percent increase in users of the Boardwalk Park Trail around the lake. At Eastman Park, ninety-six thousand user, or ninety-eight thousand users to date. Sixty-one percent of those are pedestrians. Uh, in two thousand and seventeen, we were at a hundred and ten, so we're probably looking at, uh, about a ten percent increase. Again, we still have, um, almost three months to go in regards to data, unless we have just an absolutely horrible winter, I'm quite sure we'll pass those. We also added a tr- a trail counter at, uh, the Kodak Wild, uh, Watchable Wildlife Trailhead along the Pooter Trail. Um, and so you can see the usage on the dates, I wanted to share you a different kind of graph in terms of percentages of users. But so far this year, we've had seventy-seven thousand users, uh, on that trail. You add them all together, on just those three sites, we will crack over three hundred thousand users in those three locations on our trails. The majority of them are pedestrians, but you can see that people are using our trail system. Uh, so that's, that's a lot of folks, uh, on the Pooter Trail, as well as on the number two ditch trail and on Boardwalk Park. And our budget does reflect adding a, a eco counter over on the number two, uh, cause that is frequently used, um, as well.
Isn't there a counter at River Bluffs?
There is a counter at River Bluffs that is part of, uh, Laramo County, the.
The MPO?
It's a, it's an MPO permanent.
It's an MPO permanent counter. And we can get that data, we have done that periodically just to see. Uh, one of the things I'm very interested in, uh, we need to get another counter at some point over by thirteen at that trailhead. And then start to begin to correlate from, uh, the, uh, River Bluffs property to thirteen, to Eastman Park, to the Kodak and see whether people are using the entire trail.
Where they're getting on.
And is, is it truly a commuter trail? Or is it just sections of the trails that it's serving the homeowners or maybe users in that specific area? So as, as, as Wade now has a little more time, he can begin to analyze that data and make, make decisions on those kind of, so.
Our, oh, I'm sorry, are our counters permanent then?
Our counters are permanent.
That we're showing right now?
That's correct, the ones we're showing right now.
So at any given time, we can pull a number or a counter?
I get a number up, Wade and I get numbers updated every morning from the previous day. So if you ever wanted to know a specific day, we can tell you what day's the busiest day of the year, times. We get updates every fifteen minutes that get uploaded to the cloud, so, um, unless we have a technical area, error, error, or a battery dies in that computer that's in that pole, we can give you updated information at any moment.
And we, we also, um, borrow a, a counter, a temporary counter from the MPO. And so if you ever had any interest of a location where we don't have a counter, let, let me know. Um, I've been using it, I don't know, no other municipality uses this, so we primarily are using it all on our.
Yeah, I know, but she mentioned that, but, but I mean.
Does she want a backer?
No, 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 because I think she mentioned it because she's like Windsor's the only one who keeps requesting.
And, and I, I think when you, when you look at the numbers that I just showed you, three hundred thousand users on a trail system, and we're not counting every single, we don't have them on the number two ditch trail yet. There, the, that's just proof to me, to staff, and hopefully to you, that people use our trail system. And we need to invest in, continue to educate people to do that, uh, invest in maintenance, invest in signage along the trails, those kind of things.
I think also invest in continued construction of trails too. I think getting out to all these neighborhoods, because we know that our community values are, are, they're used here.
And strategically putting these new trails in where we can capture them and get them to our business areas where they can go shopping, you know, spend money in Windsor. I assume a lot of these, they could be from out of town, but if we can get them into our business areas.
Eric, when you say that X percent were pedestrian, does it mean the rest were bicycles?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you look at the, um, the only one that doesn't have it would be the one outside the rec center. The, the ones on all the trails, there's a, there's a post that has a computer eye in it that can measure, uh, the person going by, if they're walking. Then there's a, there's two lines in the concrete that measure if it's a bicycle. So that it's able to tell us the difference, and it can also tell us which direction that they're going. So that, that's another way, if we have the whole system along the Pooter Trail, we can tell whether someone's riding it just one way, or they're riding it and coming back based on percentages of numbers. So like, for example, I can show you a pie chart that says fifty-five percent of the people went that direction, forty-five percent went the other direction. Well, that tells me that they're not all making round trips. And so the farther those numbers get apart, then people are only going one way. But if they were fifty-fifty, that tells me people are going out and coming back. So it's more of a commuter trail or a destination, they're going there and back.
If I walk around the lake twice, is that gonna be?
It counts you twice.
Are you doing that?
Yeah, no, not often. And if there were a brew pub on the far side, yeah, I'd.
Hopefully we'll be one of these.
Might have to walk four times around that.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, so, I think, yeah, fifty-five percent of pedestrians, uh, at the Kodak. So I just wanted to share with you where Wade, Wade and his staff have done their work. And a lot of this is, as you can see, it's inspection, mostly mowing, trimming and sweeping. Uh, but they spent a lot of time on the Pooter Trail, uh, not quite as much time on the Windsor Trail. Uh, but again, I think with Wade's continued effort and now having dedicated time to, uh, look at our trail system and not deal with, trying to deal with parks and trails in open space, uh, hopefully over time, we'll begin to see this graph change to reflect, uh, more emphasis in different locations. So a summary of open space and trails for you, um, and this is, there's a lot here. We moved a lot of items out of parks that were, uh, kind of stuck in line items in the park side over. But then is, uh, the big issue, or big, not issue, but big change here really is the projects and contracted services. Uh, you'll see that we've got restroom enclosures to enclose the bathrooms, uh, along the Pooter Trail. There's some porta-johns there, and I don't know about you, but, uh, it's a pet peeve of mine that, that don't like them and they're very unsightly, so try to enclose them a little bit, like the one over in Boardwalk Park by the dog park. Uh, make them look a little prettier. Uh, wayfinding and interpretive signs, adopt trail program, uh, volunteer events. So Wade is the only person, uh, we, 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 about two years ago, we got overrun with volunteer events and they take up a lot of time. And so we have a volunteer manager or a coordinator. We decided we're gonna just cut back and do four years, so Wade coordinates those. They've been, uh, very successful, but it is difficult when you have ten, twelve groups wanting to come do volunteer events and you, you have to plan it, run it, uh, so we, we just don't have the staff, so he, he does those. Um, new trail maps, our trail maps are eight or ten years old. Our trail system has changed, we need new trail maps. Uh, there's a variety of restoration projects that we haven't done in the past. Getting rid of invasive species in a variety of project, uh, variety of parks, so that's at twenty-four thousand. And then a Kodak management plan, again, looking at the property we have and trying to understand how do we manage that property in regards to, um, users, in regards to invasive species. So this is just a document, so we understand what the best practices should be for that property. Uh, and then contracted services, there's some trail replacements, lots of spraying of invasive species. Uh, the block retaining wall, uh, if you weren't aware, underneath the Seventh Street Bridge, last winter, someone stole just about every one of those retaining wall blocks. We need to replace it, um, so that's ten thousand dollars. Uh, restoration projects in a variety of different parks and strategic planning here as well. So, uh, any questions on kind of the summary of changes and where, where Wade's time and effort and money will be spent next year?
Do we have some ways if we're restoring that, that it can be more permanent to prevent somebody from walking away with our wall again? Or a camera, so at least we can catch them?
I did put a trail camera in my own down there for three weeks after that happened in hopes that someone would come back and maybe they missed a brick and never got it. So I, I'm assuming that someone drove a golf cart down there in the middle of the night and loaded it up and we just haven't figured out whose home has got a new retaining wall.
Oh, hey, it's beautiful.
That new patio you have?
You ought to come over and check it out.
Yeah. So, uh, to kind of break out the, the expenditures and revenues there, revenue is just for the Kodak farm lease, uh, of that property over there. Uh, expenditures are two eighty, most of that is wages. And then the operations, it really is the projects and the spraying and what I just explained to you, that's the difference that you see there. And the renewed interest in the effort in having a much more vigorous trails and open space program within our department and town. Any questions on financials? Now, click on to my, I think my last slide. Capital projects, uh, so there's a million dollars for the Keger Trail, uh, which basically is here at this parking lot to get over here to Almost River Bluffs. Uh, there's a hundred and five thousand dollars for, uh, for the Pooter Trail Repair. So thirty-five thousand in identified trail repair, which is along, uh, two fifty-seven on the backside or the, would be the west side of two fifty-seven along, um, Water Valley. If you've ridden that portion, um, probably don't wanna sit on the seat of your bike, cause it's very bouncy. Uh, so replacing that, uh, and then if you recall, last year, we started plugging in seventy-five thousand dollars for maintenance. Um, it is not identified, I, I E. meaning a project, it's there if we need it for a large project. This year we did, because after the spring flooding, Wade noticed that we were about to lose a bank, which would have taken into the trail and possibly been similar to the project we're doing now, those four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we may or may not spend this, depending on what kind of a flood season we have, or if there's some major damage. We also remembered that conversation last year, if, for example, there was a portion that was in the Weld County Trail or even in Greeley, and they needed some help, because maybe they had three hundred thousand dollar project. The three entities could say, hey, we've all budgeted seventy-five thousand dollars, let's put it in this pocket, don't. Cause it's about a, a trail system that all of our communities use. So if there was a bigger one in Windsor, in the Windsor portion, and we need to ask them for some funding, they could also, uh, share in that cost. So that's what that seventy-five thousand there is there, it's that earmark that we started last year. Uh, no, no guarantees that we'll use it, because as we sit today, we don't have a project that we've identified that, look, we really have to do this. But if we get a bad winter and lots of flooding, we very well, I think there were three or four slides that the study showed at some point we're gonna have to address. And if we get a bad flood, that may, that may necessitate the seventy-five thousand we've spent, but I wanted to share that with you. And then easement acquisition, um, along, uh, three ninety-two, the, uh, Hayden property and the Lee property. Uh, we've talked to them, uh, indicated to them that we're not interested in some of their other options. Uh, we're gonna, Wade's in the process now with money that we have today to get, um, appraisals done and hopefully make them an offer next year to purchase. That's a plug number, I, I don't know what those easements will cost. Um, but hopefully we can acquire those next year so that in twenty twenty, we can finish that connection. You could take the number two ditch trail from Windsor Lake all the way down to, uh, right here and be literally a couple hundred yards short of River Bluffs. We need to begin to work with Laramo County and connect that portion.
Yeah, do you have money in the budget for anything that would connect that trail all the way through to Fort Collins?
So there's, there's nothing in the budget today for any of that. However, I, I, I can update you that, um, the, that portion that we were trying to acquire, uh, the developers, looks like they're gonna put that piece in. Uh, but there's no money for trail construction or any other acquisition that we would need.
But are we gonna need money in order to make that acquisition? Or are you telling me the developer's gonna do this?
The developer says as we sit today, that they will put that in, because they did not want to expand the road in that section. So they'll move it around that piece of property that we were talking about.
Okay, that was the discussion with Laramo County?
No, well, yes, the discussion you and I had with Laramo County, that, that's not the property on it though.
Okay, right, right. This is the developer?
Correct.
Okay. Is Weld County still an equivalent partner on the Pooter River Trail? Cause when I was on the board, it was, I think, Greeley, Windsor, Weld County, and we all equally divide, you know, put in the same amount?
So it's, in terms of finances, it's split three ways. In terms of maintenance, it's split two ways. So we maintain from River Bluffs to the, uh, to the bridge that's east of the Kodak parking lot. And then Greeley maintains it from the bridge on the west side or the east side all the way to Greeley. So it's, we split the maintenance two ways, but the funding is split three. So we split the maintenance two ways, but the funding is split three.
I had a question about where we had that recent flood on the trail and where we had to clean it up. I think it was where that Merlin pad is. I saw an aerial shots of that. And it looks like, I mean, obviously it washed out because they're doing construction there and, you know, the dirt was exposed to that heavy rain we had, which is a little bit unusual. But it looked like the, where they ran that tube, that culvert, it looks like it dumped right on the trail like that. If we have future heavy rains that could potentially flood, I don't know how much that maintenance cost kind of adds up or how much the developer shares in the cost or.
That's something we need to get into, to date, maintenance hasn't been too terrible. I think though that this last storm was a little bit anomaly.
Yeah.
But in the past, we've had a little bit of an issue there, it hasn't been very severe. So we'll get into it further and see if there needs to be a broader plan to address.
Yeah, it looks like when they built that, or as they built it, they kind of ran the water from that site. It's gonna dump right onto the trail, it looks like.
Okay, we'll, we'll definitely look at that.
The number two ditch trail easement, is that along three ninety-two?
Yes.
Okay. And who owns that land west of Keiger? Is that Larimer County?
Yes.
Yes. So can you trace where this Keiger Trail's gonna be? I mean, can you show us with your little arrow? I mean, is it, is that green line? Okay.
Yeah, from here?
That's a million dollars from there to there.
And then we should probably do some park plot improvements if we have the money.
And what's the plan to finish it?
So the plan would be to next year acquire the easements going this direction back towards High Hops and budget in 2020 to build that piece. And also next year, talk to Larimer County about how do we get this here to there. So we have two short pieces, knowing that we have one community partner that is on our side to get it done.
Eric, let's back up a minute. When you're talking about the connection, number two ditch to the Keiger. So we have two options there. One is to deal with, with the easement along the number two. And the other is to go down and just follow three ninety-two.
So we could do either, we have discussed it ad nauseam with the owner of the property along the ditch and along three ninety-two. They are most amenable to the three ninety-two route, but not a huge fan of either.
Probably not a fan at all of the number two.
Yes, because they have plans for their property and so they would like to make a deal in terms of what they'd like to do on the property, and that's something that we're not willing to do.
Those future trail connections that you want to make? Are those something that we could put into a future call for projects that just came out? Because it's gonna be used for CMAC funds, which has to do with congestion mitigation. And I would imagine that adding additional trail connected connectivity would fall under that, maybe that category. So, I mean, do you have that on your list for Dennis or whoever are?
I spoke to Dennis and we talked about it at the last staff meeting. As I understand it, the funds that we're gonna receive are in the neighborhood of eight hundred thousand dollars is what Windsor would be eligible for, and these funds are also.
Well, but I don't know that we have to be stuck with what Windsor's, no, this is call for projects where there's like eight million and a seven million that we could say, on this one, hey, we're gonna work with Larimer County and Windsor and whoever, and we need X amount of dollars. But it doesn't, this one doesn't have a dedication to us.
Is that the same one we were talking about the other day, the twenty-one primary?
I thought it was twenty-two.
It's twenty-one and twenty-two, yeah.
That may tie into the Pooter Trail from River Bluffs.
Okay, I just want to make sure we don't miss that opportunity because it closes like November sixteenth or something?
Mid-November, and so the project, we talked about it in-house, because I think it was twenty-twenty-two is when we were looking at the funding year, is maybe applying to straighten County Road thirteen. You know, we, it's got that jog that's been our plan for a while and we thought that with eight hundred thousand or so, that we thought we could get a pullout. And it also gives an opportunity because that's a county line road. So maybe leverage Weld County, Larimer County, and the town of Timothée who also uses that access as well.
Right, because we could get moved up in the projects if somebody else isn't ready with their projects and we are moving, you know, we're farther ahead and we get ours a little bit more shovel ready or we got our match ready to go, we might now have to wait until twenty, twenty-one or twenty-two if, if we, you know, get our stuff in the queue, so.
Right, so anyway, yeah, discussing it in-house, we thought that maybe that was the best use of that money, just given the timing and the other entities we could leverage for that. So we thought that, that County Road thirteen project would be.
Okay.
But I think the trails are a different fund, aren't they?
Yeah, there's congestion mitigation.
It can be, but I mean, this one fund is, I know it's CMAC funds, and I'm just, that's why I was wondering though if trails could come out of that because it is, we're doing some congestion mitigation by encouraging folks to, you know, walk or bike on a trail rather than drive their car, so.
Yeah, that's come up at the Pooter River Trail meetings as well, that money. Yeah.
Okay.
The C for congestion.
So that's the end of my proposal and hope that I've answered most of your questions. If you have any other questions or need some follow-up in terms of the proposed budget for the parks side, parks, trails, and open space, if you have any other questions.
Any other questions? I just have a request before we have our next budget meeting. Can somebody get us the current organizational flow chart in a bigger format that I can actually read? So like maybe an eleven by, I think maybe all of us would like that, so we can.
We had one before, but.
We did, but, I mean, I think it just would be helpful as we're kind of going through this, we can see who all these folks are that we're talking about. We gave kindness here, but.
Names, tenure, position.
So ma'am, are you okay if we just have those printed out for you, like kind of at your table for the next meeting?
Yeah, like, yeah, I think eleven by seven, yeah. It ought to be something we can see.
Needs to be updated.
Sure.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Okay, is there another part that we're supposed to go through?
No ma'am, just for the future meetings. So again, I did put the agenda for the next one, everybody should have that. So we'll be doing the police department, engineering, economic development, the clerk and administration. And then we're gonna have capital improvement recap, so just kind of go through, you know, kind of what's changed from the original presentation and see if the board has any more questions on that. So that's, that's the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that next week?
Yes, sir.
Before, you're gonna cover all this for the.
Yes, sir. Because a lot of, you know, the smaller departments, like administration like mine, it's just, it's a two-minute update. There's not a whole lot to talk about, you know, I mean, you see clearly like where all the money for the town is going. It's the guy in green behind me. By the way, where's Green to every budget meeting? I don't know if you guys have pulled that psychological trick out of him, he's a.
I prefer his Mr. T. Gold money necklace, but.
So I think same thing with like the clerk and Stacy's budget, I mean, they're really pretty simple. So I think that those will go pretty quick and hopefully we got a little time at the end to really get through any capital improvement questions you have. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.